Today's meeting of the Boston City Council. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube at boston.gov/city-council-tv. At this time, I ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence their cellphones and electronic devices. Also, pursuant to Rule 42, I remind all in this chamber that no demonstration of approval or disapproval from members of the public will be permitted. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta Zapata, Counselor Durkin, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, Counselor Fitzgerald, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Louie Jean, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Peppin, Counselor Santana, Counselor Weber, and Counselor Worrell. The quorum is...
I have been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. We are now going to move on to invocation, but before we do so, and I know this is ahead of the announcement section, but want to just congratulate our mayor on the birth of her third child and her daughter. So congratulations to our mayor, Michelle Wu. Now, it is my pleasure to introduce this week's clergy, Father Paolo Cuman from Sacred Heart Parish, invited by Counselor Coletta Zapata. Counselor Coletta Zapata, you have the floor. And after that, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good afternoon, everybody again. Just want to echo our council president and giving a warm congratulations to our mayor on the birth of her daughter, Mira. It is an honor to welcome Father Paolo Cuman here from Sacred Heart Parish in East Boston. He was born in Italy, and after schooling, he joined the cemetery of the fraternity of Saint Charles Borromeo—I hope I said that right—in Rome. In 2001, he was an ordained deacon and assigned to the mission of the fraternity in Taiwan. After 10 years in Taiwan, he had a short visit back to Italy, and he arrived in Boston at the beginning of 2012 and taught math at Crystal Ray High School in Dorchester. In June of 2013, Cardinal—then Cardinal Sean O'Malley entrusted the pastoral care of St. Clement Parish in Medford and Somerville, where he taught math and religion at St. Clement High School for four years. After the parish closed in 2017, he served as a vicar at the Beverly and later appointed chaplain at the shrine of Our Lady of Good Voyage in the Seaport District in Boston. We are very lucky to have a father join us on August 1st, 2020, in East Boston at the Sacred Heart Parish Church close to where I live. And Sacred Heart is my family church. It's where I was baptized. It's where I received First Communion. It's where I was confirmed. And I'm thrilled to see how this church community has thrived since his arrival. In partnership with the community, he's created a hot meal soup kitchen at the church once a month, and that is still ongoing. It's been about two years, Father Paolo, right? And I just really admire Father Paolo. He has been a great friend to me and spiritual mentor, and so please welcome me and giving him a warm welcome to the council for the invocation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Coletta. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you all of you for inviting me here again. I came a year and a half ago to give this open invocation to you, and thank you for having me here once again today. 2025 just started. The new year is usually characterized by lots of expectations and new plans. I'm sure you have a lot of new plans. Your agenda is full. If you could attach a word to a new year, I think that would be hope. No matter different cultural religious traditions, we can all relate to the hopeful feelings of a new beginning. 2025 for us Catholics is a holy year, a jubilee, a special year of forgiveness of sins and also a punishment due to sin. It's a year reconciliation between adversaries, a conversion, and consequently, a solidarity, hope, justice commended to serve God with joy and in peace with brothers and sisters. A jubilee year is for us above all the year of Christ, who brings life and grace to humanity. Pope Francis has chosen pilgrims of hope as the motto for this holy year. In his document proclaiming the upcoming jubilee of 2025, Pope Francis writes, "Everyone knows what is to hope. In the heart of each person, hope dwells as the desire and expectation of good things to come, despite our not knowing what the future may bring. Even so, uncertainty about the future may at times give rise to conflicting feelings, ranging from convivial trust to apprehensiveness, from serendipity to anxiety, from firm conviction to hesitation and doubt. Often, we come across people who are discouraged, pessimistic, and cynical about the future as if nothing could possibly bring them happiness. For us all, may the jubilee be an opportunity to be renewed in hope. God's word helps us find reasons for hope." As officials of the city of Boston, you have been elected and come here to show the residents of this city through your words of action that their hope is not in vain. You have been working to make hoping for a better future become a reality. Hope for us, for each one of us, for our children, for our families, for our neighborhoods, for our communities. You've been working for this hope to become a reality. Please rise and settle in prayer. I invite you to join praying according to your own tradition or simply listen respectively. Dear Father in heaven, may you witness of these men and women and this esteemed council before a city eleven of authentic hope, a harbinger of new heavens and a new earth, where citizens will dwell in justice and harmony, in joyful expectation of fulfillment of your promises. May the way our elected officials live our lives say to all our citizens in so many words, "Hope in the Lord. Hold firm. Take heart and hope in the Lord." May the power of hope fill our days as we work together with confidence to do your gracious will. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
We'll now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Counselor Coletta Zapata, and thank you, Father Cuman, for reminding us that this is the year of jubilee, so appreciate your invocation. Mr. Clerk, do we need to amend the record? No? Okay. Thank you. Oh, Mr. Clerk, could we please amend the record to reflect that Counselor Worrell is present and now with us?
No.
And Counselor Durkin is now present and with us.
No.
Okay. We are now on to the first order of business, which is the approval of the minutes from the meeting of January 8th, 2025. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the minutes of the January 8th meeting are approved. We are now on to communications from our Honored the Mayor. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docket Number 0236?
Docket Number 0236, message in order for your approval, a new home rule petition to the General Court, petition for a special law relative to enact—relative to residential tax relief in the city of Boston.
Thank you. Docket Number 0236 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Dockets Number 0237 and 0238?
Docket Number 0237, message in order for approval in order to reduce fiscal year 25 appropriation from the Reserve for Collective Bargaining by $128,700 to provide funding for the Boston Police Department for the fiscal year 25 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Boston and the Boston Police Detective Benevolence Society Forensic Group. Docket Number 0238, message in order for supplemental appropriation order for the fiscal year 25 appropriation for the Reserve for Collective Bargaining by $128,700 to cover the fiscal year 25 costs contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the city of Boston and the Boston Police Detective Benevolence Society Forensic Group. The terms of the contract are October 1st, 2023 through September 30th, 2027. The major provisions of the contract include a market adjustment to base wages in fiscal year 25, as well as base wage increase of 2% to be given in January of 2026 and 2027, and flat amounts of $900 and $800 to be added to annual salaries in January 2026 and 2027 after the percentage increases filed in the office of the city clerk on January 13, 2025.
Thank you. Dockets Number 0237 and 0238 will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Dockets Number 0239 and 0240?
Docket Number 0239, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $500,000 in the form of a grant for fiscal year 25 Training Academy earmarked awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Fire Services to be administered by the Fire Department. The grant will fund the purchase of equipment and supplies and to fund training initiatives for the Boston Fire Training Academy to ensure the department remains current in the firefighting services. Docket Number 0240, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend for the benefit of the city of Boston a donation from the National Nuclear Security Administration's Office of Radiological Security of 2024 GMC Sierra four-wheel-drive crew cab pickup valued at $60,233. The truck will be used as a radiological security awareness and response support truck and will allow the Boston Police Department to continue the sustainment of R.S.A.R. training programs.
Thank you. Dockets Number 0239 and 0240 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docket Number 0241?
Docket Number 0241, message in order temporarily extending urban renewal plans in the city of Boston until March 31st, 2027, or passage of a proposed relevant home rule petition.
Thank you. Docket Number 0241 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. We are now on to reports of officers—of public officers and others. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Dockets Number 0242 to 0248?
Docket Number 0242, notice was received from the mayor of the appointee of Midori Morikawa as a member of the Boston School Committee nominating panel effective immediately. Docket Number 0243, communication was received from Counselor Flynn regarding discrepancies in the 2024 Boston retainer request. Docket Number 0244, communication was received from Counselor Flynn regarding the Boston Crime Lab Director. Docket Number 0245, communication was received from Counselor Braden regarding her absence from the city council meeting on January 15, 2025. Docket Number 0246, communication was received from Counselor Braden regarding the passage of Chapter 360 of the Acts of 2024, an act increasing the maximum amount of penalties which may be imposed for violations of ordinances in the city of Boston.
Thank you. Dockets Number 0242 to 0248 will be placed on file. We are now on to matters recently—
I didn't read—
Oh. Okay. Apologies. 0247 and 0248. Apologies, Mr. Clerk.
Docket Number 0247, communication was received from Kenzie Bock, Administrator of the Boston Housing Authority, regarding an update on the elevator situation at several Boston housing sites. And Docket Number 0248, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance of Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of December 4th, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. These dockets now—dockets Number 0242 to 0248—will be placed on file. We are now on to matters recently heard. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Dockets Number 0112 and 0113?
Docket Number 0112, message in order for your approval in order to reduce fiscal year 25 appropriation from the Reserve for Collective Bargaining by $6,637,486 to provide funding for the Boston Public Schools for fiscal year 25 impact of increases contained within the collective bargaining agreement between Transdev and its bus drivers. Docket Number 0113, message in order for a supplemental appropriation in fiscal year 25 from the Reserve for Collective Bargaining by $6,637,486 to cover the impact of fiscal year 25 costs contained—cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreement between Transdev and its bus drivers on the city's transportation contract with the vendor of Transdev. The terms of the contract is July 1st, 2024 through July—through June 30th, 2028. The major provisions of the contract include a market rate adjustment, an increase for regular wages, and an increase in minimum weekly hours from 31 to 35 filed in the office of the city clerk on January 6, 2025.
Thank you. The chair recognizes the chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, Counselor Worrell. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Ways and Means held a hearing on Monday, January 13th at 10:00 a.m., the first hearing of the year. Panelists included Director of Budget Management James Williamson, Louis Mandarini, Senior Advisor of Labor, Office of Labor Relations, and Daniel Rosengard, Executive Director of Transportation for Boston Public Schools. This was in regard to dockets Number 0112 and 0113, and Director Williamson and Renee Bushy, Director of Labor Relations for dockets Number 0114 and 0115. We were joined by Counselor Coletta Zapata, Counselor Fitzgerald, Counselor Weber, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Murphy, and Counselor President Louie Jean. Vice Chair Counselor Peppin and Counselor Braden each submitted letters of absence. Dockets Number 0112 and 0113 focused on the school bus driver's contract. Director Williamson stated that the first set of dockets increases Boston Public Schools' budget by $6.6 million and reduces the reserve for collective bargaining by an equal amount to support the bus driver's contract. Director Rosengard stated USW Local 87051 represent approximately 888 school bus drivers who are responsible for providing yellow bus transportation to 22,000 Boston Public School students on a regular basis. Under the contract between BPS and Transdev, Transdev is reimbursed for all unionized wages and fringe benefit costs alongside payroll taxes as approved by the city. He stated highlights of the contract include in the length of the collective bargaining agreement, wage market adjustments to hourly wages from $29.13 an hour to $33 an hour, which is retroactive to July 1st, 2024, with incremental increases in the following years of the—of the contract. A reduction in the years of service eligibility requirements for retirement benefits from 30 years of service to 25 years of service. A retirement severance increase of $100 per year of service during each year of the contract. An increase in the guaranteed weekly hours bus drivers receive from 31 hours per week to 35 hours per week effective July 1st, 2025. There was some confusion as to the percent increase to bus drive base wage will go up. It has been confirmed that it is a 13% base wage increase. The guaranteed minimum hours part of the contract will be effective upon adoption of parties of language around work as directed with worker protections, which was a key operation reform BPS sought through this contract. Director Rosengard stated, "Working in conjunction with existing provisions of the driver CBA, the addition of work as directed language is anticipated to improve BPS and Transdev's ability to cover athletics, field trips, and other transportation activities in case when they are not able to be covered through existing driver bid and assignment processes." The work as directed language is not yet finalized, and I'm going to be keeping these two dockets in committee as we push for both parties to resolve that language sooner rather than later. Dockets Number 0114 and 0115 will reduce the reserve for collective bargaining by $400—
Counselor, we only read dockets 0112 and 0113 into the record. So let's just—okay, so—
We'll stop there and then say—I—my recommendation is that Docket Number 0112 and 0113 stay in committee.
Okay. Thank you. Dockets Number 0112 and 0113 will remain in committee. Mr. Clerk, would you please read dockets Number 0114 and 0115?
Docket Number 0114, message in order for your approval in order to reduce fiscal year 25 appropriation from the Reserve for Collective Bargaining by $421,318 to provide funding for the mayor's office of housing for the fiscal year 25 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Boston and SEIU Local 888, mayor's office of housing. Docket Number 0115, message in order for a supplemental appropriation from—the—for the mayor's office of housing for fiscal year 25 in the amount of $421,318 to cover the fiscal year 25 costs contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the city of Boston and SEIU Local 888, mayor's office of housing. The terms of the contract October 1st, 2023 through September 30th, 2027. The major provisions of the contracts include base wage increases of 2% to be given in January of each fiscal year of the contract term, and flat amounts of $250, $500, $900, and $800 to be added to annual salaries in January of each fiscal year filed in the office of the city clerk on January 6, 2025.
Thank you. The chair recognizes the chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, Counselor Worrell. You have the floor.
The Committees on Ways and Means held a hearing on Monday, January 13th at 10:00 a.m. We were joined by—from the administration, Daniel Rosengard, Executive Director of Transportation for Boston Public Schools, and Renee Bushy, Director of Labor Relations. We were joined by Counselor Coletta Zapata, Counselor Fitzgerald, Counselor Weber, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Murphy, and Counselor President Louie Jean. Vice Chair Peppin and Counselor Braden each submitted letters of absence. Dockets Number 0114 and 0115 will reduce the reserve for collective bargaining by $421,318 to provide funding to mayor's office of housing to fund the FY 25 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Boston and the Services Employees International Union, Local 888, mayor's office of housing. The expected term of the contract is October 1st, 2023 through September 30th, 2027. The major provisions of the contract include base wage increases of 2% to be given in January of each fiscal year of the contract term, and flat amounts of $250, $500, $900, and $800 to be added to annual salaries in January of each fiscal year after the percent increase. Other provisions include an increase to on-call pay from $150 to $300, an increase to the uniform allowance from $250 to $375, and updates to the compensation grade appeals process, and updates to the sick leave policy allow our new employees to use the city's sick leave benefit. During this round of bargaining, the parties reached two agreements that cover the aforementioned term with the estimated cost of $2.6 million over four years. It's my recommendation that dockets Number 0114 and 0115 pass the pass.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If anyone would like to speak on these matters, okay. The—Counselor Worrell, the chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, seeks passage of docket number 0114. All those in favor say aye. Mr. Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on Docket Number 0114. Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta Zapata.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta Zapata, yes. Counselor Durkin, Counselor Durkin, yes. Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Fitzgerald, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counselor Flynn, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Louie Jean, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Louie Jean, yes. Counselor Mejia, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Peppin, yes. Counselor Santana, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Santana, yes. Counselor Weber, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Weber, yes. And Counselor Worrell, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Worrell, yes. Docket Number 0114 has received 11 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket Number 0114 has passed. The chair of the Committee on Ways and Means seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 0115. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Mr. Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on Docket Number 0115. Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta Zapata.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta Zapata, yes. Counselor Durkin, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Durkin, yes. Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Fitzgerald, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Louie Jean, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Louie Jean, yes. Counselor Mejia, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Peppin, yes. Counselor Santana, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Weber, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Weber, yes. And Counselor Worrell, yes. Counselor Worrell, yes. Docket Number 0115 has received 10 votes in the affirmative, as did Docket Number 0114.
Thank you. Docket Number 0115 has passed. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 01—so apologies. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0115 has been confirmed. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0116?
Docket Number 0116, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $860,169.70 in the form of a grant for the One Stop Career Center Grant awarded by the Mass Hire Department of Career Services to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund comprehensive career services and resources to underemployed job seekers, such as reviewing job postings, career counseling, and job coaching, education, skills training, and job placement assistance.
Thank you. The chair recognizes—Counselor Weber, the chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Yesterday, the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development held a virtual hearing on this grant. In attendance were counselors Erin Murphy, Ed Flynn, Madam President Louie Jean, and Counselor Brian Worrell. At the hearing, we were joined by Joseph Lay, Chief of Staff for the Worker Empowerment Cabinet, Katie Gall, Deputy Director and Director of Grants for Workforce and Policy Development, and Neil Sullivan, a member of the Mass Hire Boston Workforce Board and Executive Director of Boston Private Industry Council or Boston PIC. We learned that the One Stop Career Grant—Career Center Grant in the amount of $860,169.70 is from a state line item given to the city's Office of Workforce Development to supplement federal funding provided to career centers as outlined in the committee report that's before all of you today. This will primarily fund two career centers, which will provide recruitment, career counseling, funding for training, and job placement assistance that—that will be provided specifically to the Mass Hire Downtown Boston on Federal Street, that center, which is managed by Jewish Vocational Services, and the Mass Hire Boston Career Center, which is slated to open on Malcolm X Boulevard in Roxbury, will be managed by ABCD or Action for Boston Community Development. We learned in the hearing that in fiscal year 2024, our career center served over 15,000 job seekers, helping over 13,000 people find jobs. This included over 1,000 individuals with disabilities, over 9,000 people receiving unemployment assistance, and over—approximately 270 veterans. With this funding, over the next year—or fiscal year 25—we anticipate that will help over 14,000 job seekers in Boston and place over 12,000 people into jobs, close to 1,000 people with disabilities, about 9,000 people receiving unemployment benefits, and over 260 veterans in Boston with jobs. So as Chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development, I seek acceptance of the committee report and passage of this docket. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Weber. The chair of the committee—if anyone would like to speak on this matter—okay. The chair recognizes—Counselor Flynn, Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the chair of the committee as well for the important discussion. It was an informative hearing, and I was glad to know about all the programs that are available to veterans, especially helping veterans with training and educational programs that are critical in this city and in this country. And that's an issue that I want to continue to have the council engaged in, ensuring that veterans are treated with respect and dignity. We see a high rate now of homelessness for—for veterans, especially—especially women veterans as well, but if we're able to continue to work with returning veterans with employment and educational opportunities, that's something I—I will continue to work on and have dedicated my life to doing. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 0116. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and the docket—and docket number 0116 has passed. Oh, doubt the vote. Mr. Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on Docket Number 0116. Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta Zapata. Counselor Coletta Zapata, yes. Counselor Durkin—
Council Durkin, yes. Council Durkin, yes. Council Fernandez Anderson, Council Fitzgerald, yes. Council Fitzgerald, yes. Council Flynn, yes. Council Flynn, yes. Council Louie Jen, yes. Council Louie Jen, yes. Council Mejia, yes. Council Mejia, yes. Council Murphy, yes. Council Murphy, yes. Council Peppin, yes. Council Santana, yes. Council Santana, yes. Council Weber, yes. Council Weber, yes. And Council Orrell, yes. Council Orrell, yes. Document number 0116 has received 10 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. Document number 01... The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0116 has passed. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0108?
Document number 0108, message in order for your approval in order authorizing the City of Boston to appropriate the amount of $110 million for purposes of funding the Housing Accelerator Program. The expenditures related to the program are one-time in nature and are assumed to be a nonrecurring cost of the city, therefore are appropriated to be funded with the nonrecurring revenue filed in the office of the city clerk on December 2nd, 2024.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Brian Orrell, the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Before I read the committee report, I want to acknowledge all the work the council has done in the past year on this. I introduced this idea along with my co-sponsor, Mother's Fund in June in a hearing order. We held hearings on that where we heard from housing advocates additionally. Council Santana made his maiden speech on this and held a hearing and a working session on the Montgomery model. We know housing is a basic right, and we know we don't have enough of it in Boston. The city's conservative budget, budgeting and fiscal strength, not only from this, but also past administration, gives us the opportunity to use unrestricted funds for this innovative solution for housing production. We were joined by an array of housing advocates, RISE co-founder Jim Grossman, Mike O'Kane, Greater Boston Real Estate Board, DVM, Reclaim Roxbury, Lou Finnsford, DSNI, Carlos Castillo, Maha, and many more who have joined us in this conversation. We know that affordable homeownership saves our residents money over the life of the mortgage compared to renting, and offers them housing stability that is enormous. I'm happy that within this fund, we have a pilot program for, for homeownership. The committee held a hearing on Tuesday, January 14th, 2025 to discuss docket number 01... Oh, wait. Ashley Groffenberger, Chief Financial Officer for the City of Boston, Sheila Dillon, Chief Office of Housing for the City of Boston, Kenzie Bach, Administrator for Boston Housing Authority, Devin Cork, Deputy Chief for Planning for the Planning Department, and Ruben Kanter, Senior Policy Advisor for the Planning Department testified on behalf of the administration. On the second panel, Dariella Villone Maga, founder of DVM Partners, testified on the benefits of affordable homeownership. Councillors in attendance included Council Coletta Zapata, Council Murphy, Council Weber, Council Santana, Council Durkin, Council Fitzgerald, Council Flynn, Council Mejia, and Council President Louie Jen. We received a letter of absence from Vice Chair Peppin and a letter of absence, as well as questions, from Council Braden. Deputy Chief Cork explained that the Housing Accelerator Fund is an investment tool where the city takes an invest equity ownership in housing projects, aiming for a lower return than private investors to make housing construction more feasible. This initiative, possible due to the city's strong financial position, addresses high interest rates and construction costs while requiring 20% of units and funded projects to be income restricted. Projects must be shovel-ready and aligned with the city values like climate resilience and diverse development teams. Deputy Chief Cork highlighted the national housing market crisis. With multifamily housing starts at historic lows and rents rising due to limited housing production, the fund aims to lower financing costs and stabilize rents through increased housing supply. Administrator Bach outlined three investment strategies, starting with the Bunker Hill Development, which includes 265 mixed-income units, 58 of which are deeply affordable. Senior Advisor Kanter detailed a second strategy using the fund alongside the state's Momentum Fund to support large-scale rental projects. Priorities include projects with over 50 units, 20%, affordability, diverse teams, and climate resilience. A proposed timeline shows projects being evaluated and funds being dispersed through mass housing as needed. Chief Dillon introduced a homeownership pilot funded by the accelerator with low-interest construction loans managed by a private partner. These loans will be paid upon unit sales, allowing funds to recycle quickly, and they also spoke about the RFP, which will be introduced, I believe, at the end of the month or soon. Overall, construction is expected to start within a year with new units available by 2027 to 2028. Dariella Villone Maga, founder of DVM Partners, emphasized the importance of affordable housing and shared data on its positive impact on families. I've added a section into the report for council recommendations that reads as follows: As part of the series of hearings that have been held on the Development Fund in 2024 and 2025, homeownership and social housing, the chair has recommended that this council adopt values around the type of housing developments that should be funded as part of this accelerator fund. Those values, which should be revisited annually to stay within the council and administration's priorities, are as follows: Projects featuring onsite affordability should be prioritized. Projects proposed by development teams that match diversity of Boston should be prioritized. Development teams with a track record of complying with the Boston residents' jobs policy, policy should be prioritized. Projects that meet the goals outlined in the Boston residents' job policy should be prioritized. Climate resilient projects should be prioritized. Projects with community support should be prioritized, and projects with ground floor use that meets community needs, such as daycares, pharmacies, and grocery stores, should be prioritized. Additionally, the administration has agreed to file an annual report on the accelerator fund specifically on how it is meeting each of the above standards started in 2026, to be filed no later than January 31st of each year and to be made available to the public on the website of the Planning Department and Mayor's Office of Housing. As part of the agreement, a page on each of the above departments' websites should include the projects that have been invested in and a link to the planning department's project page for each development. And as Chair of the Council, Committee on Ways and Means, at this time, my recommendation that this ought to pass.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay. The Chair recognizes Council Santana, and we'll go around the horseshoe. Council Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for hosting such an important hearing. As the Chair mentioned, you know, mixed-income social housing was part of my inaugural speech in my first order of business here on the, on the Boston City Council. As someone who grew up in, in BHA apartments, I often say that BHA apartments gave my family and I the opportunity to not just stay here in the City of Boston, but really thrive here in the City of Boston. But some of the conditions that we're seeing in, in our BHA apartments as we're going across the city are inhumane, right? And this model focuses on many different things, but one area that I'm really excited about is the, the partnership that this will have with our BHA residents across the city. I think I just want to really highlight, you know, some of the things that Chair Orrell said, you know, this is an investment. This is an investment in our, in our community, in our residents, but most importantly, in, in our housing, and as we're, you know, as our young professionals, as our families, or as seniors are being pushed out here, out of the City of Boston, this will be, the idea of mixed-income social housing will be a, a great tool to add to the toolbox here in the City of Boston for us to be able to use. And we earn interest on this, so again, this will be, I know this is a $110 million one-time payment, but we will accumulate interest over time, which makes it for a great investment. And it supports mixed-income communities. Again, as someone who grew up in BHA apartments, I think it's very identifiable when you can see, you know, these are the projects, and these are other housing. And this, this idea of the mixed-income social housing will allow for all residents, despite income levels, race, gender, and so forth, to be able to live in a community where we can all thrive, respect each other, and live with dignity and respect. So I mean, it's really, really in all support of this. I really commend Council Orrell and the makers of this for pushing this forward, and I look forward to being able to support this. Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Santana. The Chair recognizes Council Mejia. Council Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I just want to thank Council Orrell for inviting me to be a co-sponsor. Actually, many of the community organizers that you mentioned were at my request, so I was happy to see that people who were out in these streets in the trenches doing the work around housing advocacy had an opportunity to help co-sign the work that we are trying to do here on the council. So just want to thank you for allowing them to occupy space in, in regards to this. I just want to like, because I'm a process person, I just want to be really clear about the dynamics. When I initially joined you as a co-sponsor, it was under a very different circumstance. I believe you had a very specific vision, and it was very targeted, and that I think that the administration tacked on, or they took your idea, and they morphed it into something. I don't know what happened, but anyways, I ended up still being the co-sponsor alongside you throughout the journey. So because, for me, it's really important about how we utilize our microphone and how we utilize our voice, I am a little bit hesitant in terms of just kind of this feels like Groundhog Day all over again. I feel like I was already here last year trying to slow things down and asking for us to do our due diligence. I don't want us to get into the habit of just writing out blank checks for millions and millions and millions of dollars when we still have yet to do our due diligence. I don't know if there's a bank in this world that will just automatically approve a loan for $110 million without really understanding the documentation that comes along with it, whether or not somebody's qualified, who are the developers that are going to be benefiting? There's some issues of equity that I have asked about, and while I understand we're going to have the opportunity to develop the RFP, I just don't feel like we've gotten those answers at this point. And I'm still a little bit unsure about the transparency piece around that. I also think that it's important for us to, to recognize what this moment is asking us to do, and that is to be a little bit more thoughtful and mindful of how folks are already worried about our tax dollars. And, and so I've asked you respectfully, I've, I filed a hearing order for Tuesday to talk about the community engagement process so that we have an opportunity to give community a microphone. And while I respect the urgency, I also just want to name that this particular hearing, this particular appropriation, we're still within the timeframe that we could actually host the hearing that I have lined up on the 21st and honor community voice and give people a platform to be able to thoroughly assess and hold, hold us accountable to some of the concerns that we've heard. But I feel like we're being, well, I'll speak for myself. I feel like what happens in this chamber is that we get pitted, and there's a sense of urgency, and then it makes it feel like if we don't vote affirmatively on behalf of something that we know will impact our constituents, then we then become the bad person in the chamber. And, and if anyone knows anything about me and my life and my experience, I know how important these investments are because I was the first person in my family to purchase a home, okay? I bounced from place to place because we were too poor to stay in one place long enough to even make friends. So I understand the urgency, and I also understand the moment. What I am struggling with is the process. What I'm struggling with is how we are showing up in this chamber and how we are utilizing and picking and choosing what we bring up for a vote when there's still so many things that feel unheard. I got a call from you on Monday advising me about this particular hearing, and you asked me about community voices. It was on Monday, the hearing was happening on Tuesday. It didn't give me enough time to organize, and I mentioned to you that I have a hearing on the 21st slated specifically around the accountability and the transparency aspects of this particular fund, and I asked respectfully if we could hold off taking a vote on this today so that we can do our due diligence. And unfortunately, that is not the case. And so I'm just, I'm asking for us to, I'm, I'm putting a motion on the floor for us to consider that we postpone consideration for this matter until the next hearing, the next council meeting on January 29th so that we can hold the previously scheduled hearing on the 21st on docket 0176. There is still time to vote on this matter on the 29th, and I think that in the spirit of really creating space for not just community voice, but for us as a council to really feel heard, then I think that we have to do our due diligence. I don't want to block this for the sake of blocking it. I want us to consider the process and how we're showing up and the, and the message that we're sending when we're not allowing us, we're, we're not allowing colleagues to do our due diligence, you know? I am in full support, but I'm also struggling with the dynamics and the ways we're going about getting there. I, I, I still feel like there's a lot of things that are unpacked, so I'm looking for someone to second my motion.
Second. Okay. Thank you. Council Mejia, is that, is that all? Okay. Thank you. So Council Mejia has put a motion to postpone to a date certain on the floor. That motion has been seconded. Just for full clarity's sake, under our rules, under Rule 20 and under Rule 48, motions to lay on the table, motions to postpone to a date certain are not debatable, okay? But let this be the last moment that we will allow for folks to speak on the motion just for clarity's sake. In the future, there will be no debate or discussion on any motion to lay on the table or on any motion to postpone to a date certain. So if there is anyone who would like to speak on those motions, I'm allowing it at this moment briefly, and then we are going to go to a, a vote on the motion that requires a majority, a majority vote. If not, we'll just go to voting on the motion, which was what I would prefer, which is what we will be doing strictly in the future. The Chair recognizes Council Coletta Zapata for a point of order.
So our comments now are strictly on the motion rather than the contents of the report.
Yes, and I'm allowing any, any discussion right now on this motion, but will not allow it in the future just for clarity's sake, so that folks know that motions to debate to a date certain, to postpone to a date certain, and motions to lay on the table, those are not debatable. So this will be the last time that this council, under my leadership, will have a discussion or be open for debate on either motion because I know that there was some confusion in the past, and I'm just saying it publicly so that folks understand that right now. So if anybody would like to speak on the motion to postpone, you may do so now. You will not be able to speak on a motion postponed in the future. So Council Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I just want to thank my colleagues. I want to thank the Chair as well for his leadership. He and I have had many conversations, robust, healthy dialogue, and we haven't agreed 100% on this, but we've gotten to a place where, well, I've gotten to a place on it where I feel like it's necessary to move. Yesterday, just talking about the urgency and, and about this fund, yesterday we heard from many residents from the Charlestown Residents Alliance, and if you were here and you heard their testimony, you know that they are living in conditions that are abhorrent. And so we're talking about a sense of urgency here. Why do we need to pass this ASAP? We get calls, I don't know if any of my at-large colleagues do, but we get calls from residents living in these houses that were built in the 1940s for World War II veterans, I think. I don't want to say the wrong thing. They are, they have outlived their, their purpose. We have had generations of Charlestown families live there. My Charlestown liaison, Elaine Donovan, grew up there. I think her parents grew up there. If you have been there, you know that they are infested with cockroaches. There are HVAC issues. There are sinkholes. There are broken stoves. And so right now, because there are rising interest rates, there is construction cost. We're seeing this not just in Boston, but across the country. The project has stalled, and so folks have left this development. They don't live in Charlestown anymore. They've had to leave their communities, and they're waiting to come back so that the next building will be built. And unfortunately, because of these market forces, these long-term market forces, project has, or progress has been... has, or progress has been stalled. And so it has been nearly 10 years of discussion with this project. I have been very lucky and honored to work with those residents of the Charlestown Residents Alliance. Tiara, Bernard, Mimi, Betty, Phil, Tina, Jenny, Monique, Carla, Mandy, Kathy, Noemi, and the thousands of other residents that live in New England's largest housing development to push this forward because they deserve dignified housing, and what they are living in right now is not dignified. And so I kindly ask my colleagues, please center their lived experiences and move this forward. They deserve that. They have been at the center of these conversations from the very beginning. There's this model of co-governance that Leggett McCall, the developer, has implemented that is a model for this sort of development moving forward. And we just need to move it forward. An everyday, week, month, year that passes by and we don't push this forward is an active choice to neglect their needs and their need for dignified housing. So please reject this motion, and let's move forward and build them this housing that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Claudia Zapata. The Chair recognizes Councilor Flynn. Councilor Flynn, is it on the motion? You'd like to speak?
Yes.
Okay, you have the floor.
Madam Chair, I know the focus of our discussion yesterday was on Bunker Hill Development. Of the $110 million, I wasn't able to get a complete answer on how much was going to Bunker Hill. Want to ask the Chair if he can give me an exact number. I did ask that several times. I didn't get an answer.
To the Chair, Councilor Worrell, if you'd like to respond. You may.
Thank you, Madam President. And to the Chair, to Councilor Flynn. As stated at the hearing, Administrator Bach, let us know that it's a negotiation process, right? That there's no set amount, there's no set dollar amount, that it's something that needed to be negotiated by project on what the city would be investing into these projects. So there's no, right, there's no set dollar amount that's going to each project. Every project will be negotiated case by case. And I think that was on the record and communicated and given to you for an answer at the hearing yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Worrell. Thank you for providing that question. I know that your light was on. I'm going to turn your light back on. Councilor Flynn, if you'd like to continue, you may.
Yes.
Now go to Councilor Worrell and Councilor Mejia, then we move for a vote on this motion.
Yeah, and I have a couple other questions and comments. To Councilor Worrell, we talk frequently in this body about supporting women-owned businesses, businesses of color, and ensuring the Boston jobs policy is respected. Are we advocating, or is there any discussion of a project labor agreement as it relates to this $110 million?
To the Chair, Councilor Worrell, if you'd like to respond. You may.
To the Chair, to Councilor Flynn. Inside of the report, there's a list of council recommendations, and we have the development teams with the track record of complying with the Boston residents' job policy should be prioritized. And then we also have in here projects proposed by development teams that match the diversity of Boston should be prioritized. So when it comes to the Boston residents' job policy and the diversity, women-owned MWBEs, we have included that inside of our recommendation on what should be prioritized for developments that we are investing in as a city.
But there are other aspects of a PLA such as wages for workers, a partnership program for workers, support for community-based organizations, women-owned businesses. Some of those weren't specifically mentioned. Are they part of the discussion, and specifically, will PLAs be included in this $110 million?
To the Chair, Councilor Worrell, if you'd like to respond. You may.
It's case by case, project by project. I don't have a definite answer for Councilor Flynn at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Worrell. Councilor Flynn, if you have additional comments or questions?
Yeah, I do, I do. From what I gathered yesterday, there'd be about $30 million going to Bunker Hill Development, and I think we all support that. I certainly support that. But the remaining $80 million, it's pretty unclear where that is going. I did advocate, and I do want to ask my colleagues if they would support me in supporting residents in public housing that have terrible elevator systems, such as the Ruth Barclay in the South End. I was pushing for that yesterday, and there was a lot of pushback from Administrator Bach and from my colleagues as well, that we would not use that money for supporting maintenance for elevator repairs in public housing developments across the city, not just in my district, across the city. And there was no commitment from Counselor, former Counselor Bach or my colleagues, which is disappointing. I represent the largest number of residents living in public housing, and I want to be consistent, I want to be fair to every resident living in public housing. I think I support the money going to the Bunker Hill project, but I also want to acknowledge the role of Councilor Mejia. I don't think there's been a person that advocated for more for public housing residents across the city than Councilor Mejia. I think what she's asking is respect for the process, but respect also for all people living in public housing, and just want to acknowledge the work she's done. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilor Mejia. Councilor Fitzgerald, I see your light on. Is it on this motion?
No, technically not.
Okay. We'll go to Councilor Mejia, we'll go to Councilor Fitzgerald, then we're going to move for a vote on this motion, and then we will no longer have debate on motions. The Chair recognizes Councilor Mejia.
Thank you, Madam President.
On, sorry, on these specific motions as outlined in Rule 20 and 48.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to be really clear because I, this past year, I organized a tour, Dying to Live Tour, and I believe that some of my colleagues joined me on that tour, looking at the quality of life for BHA residents that were living in horrible conditions. And I have been one of the loudest voices on this council in support of folks who have been neglected by the city in terms of the conditions that they live in. So what I don't want is for those who are watching at home to think that my little delay tactic here is at the cost of those folks that I represent because Charlestown knows that I go hard for them. And they know that if I'm up here talking about this issue, it is an issue of process, not whether or not they deserve a quality of life. And so I don't want to be gaslit, and I don't want people to misinterpret why I'm standing up in opposition. I am standing up in opposition not in the merit of the situation. I am standing up in opposition of the process in which we continue to function as a body. If there are still questions that people have, I am not asking for a six-month delay. I am asking for a week for us to have a hearing in which we can then, in good conscience, come back and say, we've done everything in our power to get all of the questions answered. But what we're not going to do, what we're not going to do here is try to make people look like there are anti-supporting residents who need this. What we need to start doing is making sure that we have answers to questions like the ones that you've just heard. One of the biggest questions, and you can go watch the tape because I participated in the hearings, I asked the administration about metrics and accountability and how we're going to make sure that black and brown minority-owned businesses have a seat at the table. And while I appreciate the language of should, there's no language of must. How are we going to be holding anyone accountable with language that is so soft? Should. Everyone should be cordial. Everyone should demonstrate positive leadership, but does it mandate us to? No. So if we're really serious about accountability, then that language needs to reflect that accountability, and it needs to be stronger. The city will, not should. People can interpret things however they want. So for the sake of the exercise, the hearing was yesterday, the report was presented today. Out of the fairness of the process, which is what I'm all about, I believe we have an opportunity to do things in the matter of which people can restore trust in this body because people don't trust us because the way we show up in this chamber is questionable. I am asking for a hearing that is already scheduled, that will already happen before we're slated to take a vote. I am not asking us to make Charlestown wait an eternity. I'm asking for us to demonstrate leadership in this body that signals to the administration and everyone else who is paying attention to us that we are here to do the people's work. And so again, out of respect for the process, I am asking my colleagues to give us an opportunity to host a hearing that is already slated and booked, and people are lined up to speak because what we're doing is denying those folks an opportunity to be heard, and I can't sit comfortably with that. I can't. So that is why I'm asking us to consider allowing the hearing that is already slated on the 21st, it's already booked, people are already set up to speak, allow democracy to take place. Now, I will respect the process, and I understand that at the end of the day, the votes that I take in this chamber impact the constituents that I represent, but I represent the city as a whole and not my own interest.
Thank you. I see there are multiple lights on. I am only going to Counselor Fitzgerald. He has not spoken on this motion. We're voting on this motion, and then it will remain open for debate. So the Chair recognizes Counselor Fitzgerald, and we're moving to a vote on this motion.
Thank you, Council President. A point of clarification as well.
Okay.
Maybe it's to the same question, so hopefully it takes care of it. But hearing the same topic in two different committees, I didn't know that was something that, I thought that was against counsel, maybe through you to the clerk, is this something, this hearing that the Councilor Mejia has scheduled with this topic on it, that we've always had, already had a hearing on and a different topic, is that still allowed to go through, and can that hearing actually happen? If this motion were to pass, because it seems to be the same topic in two different committees.
It's, I didn't even know about. I thought there was one hearing, and I thought there was one hearing in Councilor Worrell's committee. That's the only hearing that I know of.
If you're looking ahead for next week, it is listed under Councilor Mejia's post-audit as, well, this would be a subject that would be discussed, and I just want to make sure we're abiding by all rules. And Councilor Mejia, if this does work against you, I apologize. It is only because, like you always say, we want to make sure we get the process right.
Yeah. So I was under, understanding that this is, is this also your point of clarification?
No, I'm not.
Yeah, that there was one docket on this, and that's this Accelerator, that's the Accelerator Fund that we had, that we had the conversation on. That's the only docket that I'm aware of that's been filed on this.
There is a, there is a hearing scheduled to next week that presents this as a topic.
Okay. All right. Okay. Well, we'll clarify. Right now, we are just going to go forward and move, and vote, take a vote on the motion.
Point of clarification.
Point of clarification?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilor Flynn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To the Chair of Ways and Means, what impact will this have if there is a delay of one week? So we're able to listen to Councilor Mejia's constituents, many of them public housing advocates, is there any impact at all as it relates to construction of the, of the project?
To the Chair, Councilor Worrell, you may respond.
Thank you. And I think it's important to get an understanding of Counselor Fitzgerald's question on, you know, can we even have another hearing, right, on the Accelerator Fund in another committee when it was submitted, when this docket was submitted in Ways and Means? So just so that we're all on the same page and have a clear understanding of the process and what can be done, because right now, I don't, and I have the docket in my committee, I don't have another hearing scheduled. So I think, before I answer your question, I'm not even sure if Councilor Mejia is able to have a hearing on a docket that's in my committee.
Thank you. I will clarify. So I think what happened is that there was a docket that was filed, that was amended, that perhaps presented Rule 15 issues that was not, was not caught. So there probably in another committee should not, my assessment is that there should not be another hearing in another committee on the same topic where it's perhaps a Rule 15 issue via an amendment of a docket that was not caught, and therefore, there is this, there is a hearing order that states that it will discuss another topic that is already part of another committee. The Chair recognizes Counselor Murphy for a point of order.
So last week, there was a docket that I believe Counselor Worrell and Counselor Fernandez Anderson sponsored, which went into post-audit, and there have been many meetings scheduled. Thank you for doing that quickly. Many topics are in there, so I think we need to call for a recess because I know White Stadium conversation is in there. It also went to education. There's Blue Hill Avenue. There's many questions at Madison Park High. So there may be many dockets that now need to be questioned if they should not have been placed into that committee last week because there's already hearings scheduled, people ready to talk, and looking forward to having the transparency on these conversations that need to happen. So I'm asking for a recess.
Yes. Thank you. The clerk is asking for a recess as well because I don't think that he saw the docket. And so if there are any Rule 15 issues, the clerk will settle them, and therefore, we will be in a brief recess. Thank you, Mrs., thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone. (applause) The chair recognizes counsel Gerald. You have the floor.
We are back. We have a session.
The clerk has... And we discussed with the clerk and our council, the hearing can still happen on the separate docket, and it will happen on the separate docket. We have before still the motion, and so council Mahia has put forward a motion to postpone, and we are going to go for a vote on that motion to postpone this docket. We are going to conduct a roll call vote on that docket. It requires a majority vote for it to postpone to a date certain. Mr. Clerk, please conduct a roll call vote. Point of clarification.
Do we have to wait for councillor Santana? That's just my question.
We will see if he returns. Is Ron available? Are...
As long as there's seven people, we can continue.
We can vote. But we did just come back from recess, so I do want to give him the courtesy. He may not know that we have returned from recess, so I'd like to give my colleague the courtesy of returning. He is back. Thank you. Mister Clerk?
Madam Clerk. I did ask council, I did ask the chair a specific question. What happens if we have a meeting next week and we vote on this next week? Does this impact the construction schedule at all? I do want to be respectful to council Mahia and her constituents that have, that she's engaged for a period of time to encourage them to attend this meeting. I think it's important that we respect her constituents and her... Many of them are public housing residents, so want to ask what impact it will have on scheduling.
Thank you. Miss, council Royal, you can respond to that question, and then we are moving. That was not a point of clarification, but council Royal, you may respond.
Due the chair to counsel Flynn. We have hosted five hearings that were all publicly noticed, that gave everyone an opportunity to come and testify. So all of our hearings, this year and last year, you know, had an opportunity for all constituents in the public to come and testify. And just like any other council hearing, you know, we have publicly noticed it and gave the opportunity for people to come and testify. Thank you.
Thank you. We are moving to a roll call vote. Mister Clerk, council Mahia's motion to postpone to a date certain, which would be January 29th, please conduct a roll call vote. This requires a majority vote on this motion, then we will move to the... Depending on the outcome of this, we will move to the actual docket. Mister Clerk, please conduct a roll call vote.
Counselor Braden.
Oh, oh. Yeah, I just want to explain, apologies, that a no vote will not postpone, and means that we will vote on this docket today. A yes vote means postponement. Mister Clerk, please conduct a roll call vote.
Counselor Braden. Counselor Coletta Zapata.
Absolutely not.
Counselor Coletta Zapata, no. Counselor Durkin.
No.
Counselor Durkin, no. Counselor Fernandez-Anison. Counselor Fitzgerald.
No.
Counselor Fitzgerald, no. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Louie Jean.
No.
Counselor Louie Jean, no. Counselor Mahia.
Which one? President.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Peppin. Counselor Santana.
No.
Counselor Santana, no. Counselor Weber.
No.
Counselor Weber, no. Counselor Worrell.
No.
Counselor Worrell, no. Seven votes in a negative, two in the affirmative, and one present.
Okay, thank you. This motion has not succeeded. We are now moving on to actually a vote on the docket from here on out, if there's no debate on motions. Just want to make that clear. No debate on motions here on out related to motions to lay on the table and to postpone to a date certain. So if there is any discussion on the docket, or if anybody would like to put forward a motion, you may do that, but right now, we are right before us is council Worrell's motion to pass. The chair recognizes counsel Durkin. I'm sorry, the chair's recommendation that this committee report ought to pass. The chair recognizes counsel Durkin.
Thank you so much. I am fully in support of this. I think any proposal that gets projects unstuck in our city is a useful thing, and I would also like to move for a vote on this matter.
Thank you. The chair recognizes counsel Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to be voting yes on this. I would ask my colleagues if they would agree to include in as part of this $110 million money for upgrades to elevators in the BHA system. Again, I know there's pushback from administrator Kenzie Bark, and I know there's some pushback here from city council colleagues that don't believe the money should go into new elevators for BHA residents, for whatever reason it might be. But they deserve respect. They deserve dignity. Many of the residents, many of them are in my district. The system continues to break down. The elevator system continues to break down. Without your support, it will always be like that unless we invest money throughout BHA for elevator systems. The development in Charlestown desperately needs money, but so does other developments throughout Boston for their elevator system. These buildings are old. These elevator systems are almost obsolete, and it's going to take a couple hundred million dollars to fix up our elevators in BHA. But in the meantime, residents in these developments are sometimes stuck in their building. There's one woman in the Sultan at Ruth Barclay that has cancer, and she's not able to get to her chemotherapy appointments because she can't get down the elevator. Sometimes people can't get back up with their groceries. So I would ask my colleagues, especially those that represent public housing developments, if you'll make a commitment that public housing residents are important. They deserve some respect. They deserve some dignity, and let's not turn our back on them. Again, I know there's not support from administrator Bark, but I hope there's support here from our colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes counsel Mahia. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to my colleagues for what we are calling an exercise in discourse. This is the real work, y'all. In case you don't know, this is what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to question. We're supposed to be thoughtful. We're supposed to be sometimes a little bit disruptive, because otherwise, what good are we if we're not really here for the work? So while I know how much you all love that about me, I will continue to give that to you, because that's what you want. But anyways, I am rising up to just, to really just be really super explicit about some of the things that I believe we need to see moving forward. As a co-sponsor of this particular initiative, I was really excited about the possibilities around the affordable home ownership and the opportunities that we were going to have to support black and brown minority-owned businesses and developers. So I'm really hoping that we're going to have the political courage now to make sure that, you know, that should becomes must and all of these things that we do to make sure that we're doing our due diligence, you know? I'm really going to look to the chair to make sure that we, you know, hold ourselves accountable to the promises that we have made to those folks who we've invited to this chamber, who fought on behalf of and in support of this accelerator fund, and that we do so, understanding that we have a mandate. And that mandate is making sure that we're centering equity and that we're doing so in ways that we're going to have checks and balances. We're going to... It's not... I appreciate the report once a year, but I think that we should be doing more than just a once-a-year check-in. I think that we should have a protocol, a procedure, or something in place that looks at the decision-making process for how you go about the RFP process, who gets selected, how much money they get, why they got that amount. I think all of those things still need to be unpacked, and I'm looking to you as the chair of Ways and Means. You hold the money bag, right? So I'm looking to you to make sure that we are holding ourselves accountable to that, that we're not just writing free checks here and there. And then while I have the mic, I think it's also really important for us to recognize that it is really difficult sometimes to be the only voice and to speak up, especially when I am a woman of color and I am trying to be as supportive as possible to my colleagues, and I don't want to be labeled as difficult. But the problem is, is that if I don't show up as I am, then what I'm doing is telling everybody else who's just like me that they don't have a voice in this chamber. And I know this, the way I show up makes a lot of people feel uncomfortable here, and I'm okay with that. But what I'm not going to do, and I'm going to continue to say, I'm not going to water myself down, but I'm not going to allow people to disrespect me either or to try to minimize or flip the script on me. So if I'm showing up and I'm holding the administration accountable, I'm doing it because that is my job, and I'm not doing it to be difficult. I'm doing it because if I don't do it, people are going to continue to say that we're a rubber stamp. So if I'm going to be the only one that stands up when we're pushing things through, I'm going to continue to be the only one that stands up. And that is okay, because I came into this chamber by myself without the support of political power brokers. And so that gives me the opportunity to show up unapologetic, without any fear, to speak up the way that I do, whether you guys want to hear it or not. Whether you want to hear it or not, I am one of your 13 colleagues. Whether you want to hear it or not, I represent people who are not happy with the way that we're showing up. Whether you want to hear it or not, I am going to say it. I am going to say it. And I don't have anything to lose in saying it. Not a thing, because I don't need the title to do the work. So I will never be afraid of anyone or anything but the man up above. Period.
The chair recognizes counsel Royal. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to my colleagues for what we are calling an exercise in discourse. This is the real work, y'all. In case you don't know, this is what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to question. We're supposed to be thoughtful. We're supposed to be sometimes a little bit disruptive, because otherwise, what good
are we if we're not really here for the work? So while I know how much you all love that about me, I will continue to give that to you, because that's what you want. But anyways, I am rising up to just, to really just be really super explicit about some of the things that I believe we need to see moving forward. As a co-sponsor of this particular initiative, I was really excited about the possibilities around the affordable home ownership and the opportunities that we were going to have to support black and brown minority-owned businesses and developers. So I'm really hoping that we're going to have the political courage now to make sure that, you know, that should becomes must and all of these things that we do to make sure that we're doing our due diligence, you know? I'm really going to look to the chair to make sure that we, you know, hold ourselves accountable to the promises that we have made to those folks who we've invited to this chamber, who fought on behalf of and in support of this accelerator fund, and that we do so, understanding that we have a mandate. And that mandate is making sure that we're centering equity and that we're doing so in ways that we're going to have checks and balances. We're going to... It's not... I appreciate the report once a year, but I think that we should be doing more than just a once-a-year check-in. I think that we should have a protocol, a procedure, or something in place that looks at the decision-making process for how you go about the RFP process, who gets selected, how much money they get, why they got that amount. I think all of those things still need to be unpacked, and I'm looking to you as the chair of Ways and Means. You hold the money bag, right? So I'm looking to you to make sure that we are holding ourselves accountable to that, that we're not just writing free checks here and there. And then while I have the mic, I think it's also really important for us to recognize that it is really difficult sometimes to be the only voice and to speak up, especially when I am a woman of color and I am trying to be as supportive as possible to my colleagues, and I don't want to be labeled as difficult. But the problem is, is that if I don't show up as I am, then what I'm doing is telling everybody else who's just like me that they don't have a voice in this chamber. And I know this, the way I show up makes a lot of people feel uncomfortable here, and I'm okay with that. But what I'm not going to do, and I'm going to continue to say, I'm not going to water myself down, but I'm not going to allow people to disrespect me either or to try to minimize or flip the script on me. So if I'm showing up and I'm holding the administration accountable, I'm doing it because that is my job, and I'm not doing it to be difficult. I'm doing it because if I don't do it, people are going to continue to say that we're a rubber stamp. So if I'm going to be the only one that stands up when we're pushing things through, I'm going to continue to be the only one that stands up. And that is okay, because I came into this chamber by myself without the support of political power brokers. And so that gives me the opportunity to show up unapologetic, without any fear, to speak up the way that I do, whether you guys want to hear it or not. Whether you want to hear it or not, I am one of your 13 colleagues. Whether you want to hear it or not, I represent people who are not happy with the way that we're showing up. Whether you want to hear it or not, I am going to say it. I am going to say it. And I don't have anything to lose in saying it. Not a thing, because I don't need the title to do the work. So I will never be afraid of anyone or anything but the man up above. Period.
The chair recognizes counsel Royal. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I just want to also just thank you again for helping push the creation of this fund. I think this fund has been shaped by the council. As I mentioned before, council Santana on the push on social housing, our fight to getting affordable home ownership into that. It was the advocacy from this council and from the community that helped shape this fund. And I'm not only excited about getting housing production going, but also to make sure, you know, some of the things you pointed out, to get some of that housing, when we're creating housing production, that there's equity component to it. So getting more diverse teams in there. So I'm very excited about the fund and also the economic benefits that reap not only from the ownership side, but also when we're building these homes. In terms of the elevators at BHA, there's $200 million on the capital plan, and I do too have Boston housing sites that have elevators added down. So I am happy to continue to push for that $200 million that is allocated on the capital plan to be used for some of the elevators. But what I'm also excited about in this fund is that, you know, similar to what we're seeing in Charlestown, is we're able to use this fund to create a whole new Boston housing site. And this is a tool that possibly we could use all across the city, possibly at Mariela McCormick, possibly at Common Square Apartments. So this tool will give us the opportunity to build new BHA sites that have broken elevators, where people are not living in dignified places. This is a tool that gives us that opportunity to move that along faster. So thank you, and I'm looking forward to taking this vote.
Thank you. I just want to speak briefly on this substantively, because I have not. I was really encouraged yesterday by the hearing that we had to hear from the Charlestown Residents Alliance, to look at that model of co-governance. Rarely do we see that. Rarely do we see that level of residents literally sitting at the table and telling the city what they want. Rarely do we hear and see people who live in public housing be elevated to being co-equal partners and thinking about what the housing that they deserve, what that should look like. And so I am very happy that this is happening. We not only will we be using this money, we'll get a return of four to six percent. We are building alternatives to what the market cannot do, and I want to see more of this. I want to see more innovation. I want to see us leaning into our fiscal strength as a city to do for the least among us. And our residents who live in public housing are the least among us. And so I am excited to vote yes on this. Mister Clerk, will you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 0108. Counselor Braden. Counselor Coletta Zapata.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta Zapata, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Durkin.
Yes.
Counselor Durkin, yes. Counselor Fernandez-Anison. Counselor Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counsel Louie Jean.
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jean, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Please.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Peppin.
Yes.
Counsel Santana, yes.
Yes.
Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Weber, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Worrell, yes.
Thank you. Right now, families in our city are being charged for something as basic as a birth or death certificate, documents that are essential for things like enrolling a child in school, starting a job, or settling a loved one's affair. My office has heard from constituents who have paid three times the amount of the original cost to a third-party service just to get their own records. Those third-party services are profiting off of this, and my hope is that by publicizing the no-cost of this aspect would help decrease the use of these third-party services. Waiving the fee will also be helpful for our returning citizens who might need a birth certificate as they come home and enter the workforce. And the Boston Finance Commission, on December 8th, sent a letter recommending the abolition of the fees used in one of Boston Public School students as a case study. I'm going to read briefly from that letter that was signed by the executive director of the Boston Finance Commission, Matthew Cahill. And Counselor Worrell.
Yes.
Counselor Worrell, yes. Docket number 0108 has received 10 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. Uh, the committee report has been accepted and docket number 0108 has passed. We are now on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0249?
Docket number 0249, Counselor Worrell offered the following. Ordinance amending City of Boston Code, Chapter 18-1.2B to make certificates of birth and death free.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Orell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to add Counselor Coletta Zapata as an original co-sponsor.
Counselor Coletta Zapata is added as an original co-sponsor.
And I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counsel President Louie Jen as a third original co-sponsor.
Counselor Orell seeks to suspend the rules, add Count, uh, myself as the third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections, I'm so added. Counselor Orell, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you. Uh, right now, families in our city are being charged for something as basic as a birth or death certificate, documents that are essential for things like enrolling a child in school, starting a job, or settling, settling a loved one's affair. Uh, my office has heard from constituents who have paid three times the amount of the original cost to a third-party service just to get their own records. Uh, those third-party services are profiting, profiting off of this. And my hope is that by publicizing the no cost, um, of this aspect would help decrease the use of these third-party, uh, services. Waiving the fee will also be helpful for our returning citizens who might need a birth certificate as they come home and enter the workforce. And the Boston Finance Commission, on December 8th, sent a letter recommending the, uh, the abol, um, abolition of the fees using one of the, using one of Bo, Boston Public School students as a case study. I'm gonna read briefly from that letter that was signed by the Executive Director of the Boston Finance Commission, Matthew Cahill, and the Board Chair of the Commission, Christopher Iannella. And before I read, um, that case study, I just wanted to thank Counselor Brayden. I know she's been constantly advocating to get money to the, um, Finance Commission and we were able to do so in the last budget cycle. The letter reads, uh, "The latest figure shows that 77% of Boston Public School students are low-income. Students should not miss out on opportunities because they lack funds to obtain government documents or identification. Whether that job be for job opportunities or to participate in sports." It goes on to rec, recommend that this cost barrier be removed. Combined with the factor for our returning citizens and the hardship often encountered, um, by our students and also our relatives dealing with the loved ones in death, I believe that this fee should be removed entirely. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor, uh, Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I wanna thank the, uh, the lead sponsor for adding me on. Uh, I think that this is a no-brainer. It prioritizes accessibility and equity for our residents. These vital records are essential for accessing education, employment, family benefits, and more. Um, removing financial barriers to obtain them is a huge step forward ensuring that no one is left behind due to economic hardship. Um, I have spoken to the lead sponsor on this too. I think that there, um, eh, as we progress in the conversation and, and I think it will be going through my committee, but we need to carefully consider, um, some of the fiscal implications of the, of this policy and just making sure that, you know, either through means testing or ensuring that, um, you can't get a, a million birth, uh, birth certificates or death certificates for free, making sure that there's some sort of qualifications to that. But in general, I do support this, um, this going forward and I look forward to those future conversations. Again, just wanna thank the leadership of the original co-sponsor. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Coletta Zapata. Um, I'm also, um, very excited, uh, for this ordinance. Uh, my office has done a lot of work for our folks who are returning home from incarceration about making sure that the best way to, uh, address issues of recidivism is to make sure that we are holistically meeting simple barriers that people face, such as access to IDs, access to birth certificates. So we've been doing a lot of work around access to, um, RMV, uh, driver's license. But it's just important that we continue to try to lower the administrative obstacles for vulnerable populations. Um, and so I think this is one way of us getting there. So I look forward, uh, to a hearing on this. We've heard from our seniors, from a number of people, um, who are indigent, um, who where this is a barrier, and so I look forward to the work on this. The chair recognizes Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to thank the lead sponsor and, and everyone who is in support of this. This is good policy and a world-class city like Boston should not be charging for birth or death certificates. And we do have some ideas this year that might end up covering the cost, um, and review, revenue generating ideas. And I think, um, when you reference, um, how much we raise and how much revenue we generate from this, um, it's from, it's, it's, it's small and this would make a huge difference. So thank you so much, Counselor Orell, and, um, excited to support this.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, although I'm not an original co-sponsor, this is an issue I've worked on my entire life practically as a probation officer at Suffolk Superior Court for eight years, um, helping returning citizens especially get the services that they need to be successful in life. But they can't be successful in life without a simple document, a birth certificate. Many men, mostly men, and women coming out of jail or coming out of prison will, will report to the probation department without any form of identification, without any documentation other than their discharge paper. I would often have to go to City Hall as a probation officer with my probation, with my probationers and I would have to at times pay for the fee so that they could get a birth certificate. Many, most of them didn't have the fee necessary to even get, get the document. Um, that's one obstacle and it's a major obstacle that we place in the way of returning citizens. We need to give them every opportunity to be successful. They are our family members, they are our, our neighbors. Yes, they've made mistakes. Many times they've made mistakes and they, I think they've, were committed to jail or prison and they've done their time and now they're trying to come back and raise families and be productive. But not having access to a physical document like a birth certificate can set someone back significantly. Um, so I'm glad that the sponsors have filed this. This is something I proudly will support and is proudly something I will continue to support because we need to do everything we can to help those people coming out of jail and prison. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add counselors, uh, Durkin, uh, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Santana, Weber. This docket, docket number 0249 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0250?
Docket number 0250, Counselor Durkin offered the following. Order for a hearing regarding the feasibility and impact of a sugar-sweetened beverage tax in Boston.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Um, I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counselor Coletta Zapata as an original co-sponsor.
Counselor Coletta Zapata is so added.
Thank you so much. Today I rise to introduce a hearing order to explore the implementation of a sweetened, sugar-sweetened beverage tax, or SSBT, in Boston. This proposal seeks to address two interconnected challenges. The rising burden of diet-related disease in our communities and the need to identify sustainable revenue streams to invest in public health and equity-focused programs. Boston is celebrated for its healthcare institutions. District 8 includes institutions like Mass General Brigham, Dana Farber, Beth Israel, and Boston Children's Hospital, who work deeply in our communities in partnership with the Boston Public Health Commission to deliver a Boston where everyone has an equal opportunity to live a healthier life. But we know life expectancy varies drastically, by as much as 20 years, between Roxbury and Back Bay, due to, in part, to chronic illnesses like obesity, diabetes, and heart disease, and conditions that disproportionately are borne by communities of color. Sugar-sweetened beverages are a major contributor to these health issues and offering high sugar content with no nutritional benefits while being aggressively marketed to our youth. In Boston, over 70% of adolescents report consuming soda regularly, with consumption rates highest among communities already facing health inequities. A modest tax on sugary beverages modeled on a successful programs that are happening right now in cities like Philadelphia and Seattle has been proven to reduce consumption and improve public health outcomes. For every 1% increase in the price, these cities have seen consumption drop approximately by the same percentage. The median consumption drops by volume close to 30% in the years following the institution of such taxes. Here in Boston, a 1% to 2% per ounce tax could prevent more than 6,000 cases of obesity, reduce diabetes by 9%, and save over $90 million in healthcare costs in the first decade. This potential revenue for this tax, estimated to be $20 to $30 million annually, could be transformational. These funds could support critical initiatives like food literacy programs and youth recreation, infrastructure projects, while advancing health equity. Importantly, uh, we have an important imperative here at the City Council, and that's to support residents. Critics may argue that such tax is regressive. However, evidence shows that healthcare benefits and reinvestment in opportunities in our communities far outweigh the cost. Cities with SSBTs have used revenue to fund pre-K education, improve infrastructure, promote healthy foods, and, and they have proved these policies can work to benefit those most impacted by health inequities. This is not just a policy to regulate sugary drinks. It's a step towards a healthier, more equitable Boston. I ask for your support as we begin this conversation, and this is just a hearing order to continue engaging with stakeholders, public health experts, and residents to shape a policy that reflects our shared values. I know there will be debates and I welcome them. This process requires time to socialize the idea with the State House, engage stakeholders, and ad, design a policy that's fair, effective, and sustainable. But it's worth having the conversation. Let's think about the opportunities to invest in food literacy, healthier neighborhoods. Um, I put out a Substack, um, this weekend and I've heard from many Bostonians who have varying opinions. Uh, but one, one critical, critical thing that I've heard is that, um, people don't want this spent in just any way. They want, if we're going to do this, we need to do it to make Boston healthier, uh, more sustainable. And, um, I'm really excited about the conversation, so I hope my colleagues will join in. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Durkin. And I'm gonna go to your co-sponsor next, but, because I didn't say it again like last week and I just heard, uh, the clock go off. Um, for, uh, new matters, uh, the rule of three minutes, co-sponsors, two minutes, and anyone else who wants to speak on the matter, and recommending for refiles, that folks stick to 30 seconds to a minute, um, so that the real work can happen in the working sessions and in the hearings. The chair recognizes Counselor Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President, and I appreciate the reminder. I'll be brief. Um, I am, this combines two, um, uh, two of my favorite topics, which is health and food policy and tax revenues in the city of Boston. So when, when I saw this go through the agenda, I reached out to, um, to Counselor Durkin to add me as a second co-sponsor. Thank you so much. Um, I know that this is a, a very hot topic in, in the city and has been for quite, quite a while. I remember when then First Lady Michelle Obama had put this idea out there and, um, and people feel very strongly about it. And I appreciate the perspectives, uh, that have already been, um, uh, or folks that have reached out to provide their perspectives, including the Teamsters. I, I spoke to them this morning. And so I look forward to having them involved in this conversation. And it really is just a conversation. This is a hearing order to discuss the feasibility and the impact of some sort of tax like this. Um, we know that there are devastating impacts already and, and there is another economic argument to this as well. But, um, the impact of preventable diseases like diabetes, heart disease, and, and obesity, conditions that disproportionately affect, uh, low-income communities. Um, there's also been, uh, instances of this happening before in cities like Philadelphia, Oakland, and Seattle that we can look to as models or, um, or lessons learned. So I do look forward to diving into the full economic impact of this tax, uh, carefully considering, considering the implication for all stakeholders and just in general, look forward to the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I wanna thank the makers for filing this. As soon as I started, I got really excited because I am a public health, um, advocate. I actually started my career in the public health space. And so I have a lot of folks who have been doing some organizing around issues like this, not just locally, but nationally. Um, and in that, and, and when I started, I reached out to some folks. There were some things that they advised me to be mindful of is that in this moment in time, a lot of people of color already and low-income people already feel under attack, right? Like, and people are telling them what they can eat, what they can drink, how they can, you know? So I just wanna make sure as we continue to have these conversations that we're being mindful of not, you know, minimizing how people feel about the situation. And then the other, um, concern that was, that bubbled up to the top is a lot of the businesses, the small business owners, a lot of them are local bodegas and, you know, corner store, folks who are operating businesses, they're already feeling the crunch, already feeling under attack. So as you continue to have these conversations, making sure that we are modeling the behavior of being balanced and making sure that the hearing order are listening to some of our small businesses and helping them understand their accountability and their role and, and what this looks like. And then also making sure that we are hearing from folks who are low-income, who feel a personal attack on them. That's the language that I've heard from some folks, that they feel targeted. Um, because, you know, they're low-income, you're gonna arise their, their ability to drink soda. They, they just feel a little bit targeted. And not to say that that's what you are doing, but that's just the feedback that I've heard so far. Just wouldn't be who I am if I didn't bring it into the chamber. Something for us to consider as we continue to have these conversations. But really excited from a public health standpoint to have. And I would love to be able to get to a place where, um, everyone feels hurt and we come up with some viable solutions that everybody wins. That's the goal, is for everybody to feel like they have won. So looking forward to helping you make that happen. Thank you.
The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also heard this morning from Teamsters 25 and they were clearly opposed to this idea. There's many Teamsters in my district and especially in South Boston that have called me this morning about this. Um, the other aspect I, I wanted to make is during difficult, economic, challenging times, it's not the right time for another tax. And then it will impact, in my opinion, it will impact small businesses in our neighborhoods. It will also impact, um, businesses, it'll impact, um, the downtown area too if we add a congestion tax coming into the downtown. But I guess my point is during challenging times, it's not the right time to add more taxes. We need to support residents and not hit them with as many taxes as we have been. Um, we need to be fiscally disciplined and fiscally responsible. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add counselors Santana, Weber, Worrell, please add the chair. Docket number 0250 will be, will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0251?
Docket number 0251, Counselor Durkin offered the following. Order for a hearing to investigate the use, impact, and potential ban of algorithmic price setting in the Boston rental housing market.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Chair. Um, I'd like to, um, suspend the rules and add Counselor Santana as a second co-sponsor. And pursuant to Rule 12, add Counselor, uh, add, uh, you as a third.
Thank you. You can, you don't have, um, Counselor Santana is added as a second. And Counselor Durkin seeks to suspend the rules, add me as a third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections, I'm so added. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Council President. This is a refile, but I rise today to reintroduce this urgent matter that's directly impacting the affordability and fairness of our city's housing market. But since, uh, we last, I last introduced this, um, the Commonwealth's AG has joined up as a party with the U.S. Department of Justice in nine other states in a civil antitrust lawsuit against RealPage, a leading maker of rental algorithmic price-setting software, and six of the nation's largest landowners. And just this week, I heard from a tenant that lives in District 8 who believes that they were targeted, uh, by this price-setting software when they looked online and they saw their same apartment for $500 less than what they were negotiating, uh, as, uh, as their lease renewal. So I know for a fact that a landlord in my district is using this. And I know for a fact, uh, that, um, that the AG signing on means that we have neighbors who, um, and this could involve, um, essentially your landlord doing a credit check on you and deciding that because your credit is so good, you could pay more money for your rent. Um, that's absolutely disgusting and this needs to be banned in the city of Boston. Honestly, um, when we say let the market to decide rents, this is not letting the market decide. This is letting a program decide how much rent you can pay. Absolutely disgusting, um, and I'm excited to work on it this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add counselors Coletta Zapata, uh, Mejia, Weber. Please add the, uh, I'm on it, uh, and Counselor Worrell. This docket, docket number 0251, will be referred to the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Uh, Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0252?
Docket number 0252, Counselor Flynn offered the following. Order for a hearing to discuss expanding the urban tree canopy in District 2.
The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, may I add Counselor Durkin as an original co-sponsor?
Counselor Durkin is added as an original co-sponsor. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
I will be brief. This is a refile from last year. Discuss strategies expanding urban tree canopy in District 2, which includes some of the areas with the least tree coverage, such as South Boston, Chinatown, various places in downtown Boston. As of 2019, South Boston had 8% tree coverage. Chinatown had 7% compared to citywide average, 27%. Healthy urban tree canopy is important to our environment, quality of life. Trees not only provide beautification, they absorb excessive stormwater runoff, filter, pollution, provide shade, combat the heat island effect, we especially see that in Chinatown, and bring a host of environmental and public health benefits residents across District 2. In Chinatown downtown, South Boston continues to advocate for more tree plantings. Increasing our tree canopy should be a priority for our continued efforts to combat heat island effects, um, especially with such low coverage in District 2. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh, thank you, uh, Counselor Flynn, and thank you for, um, I know this is a refile, so thank you for, uh, keeping it brief. Um, if, if you, you're the, if you'd like to speak, you may.
I just wanna thank, um, Counselor Flynn for adding me as an original co-sponsor. Trees, open space, um, and, uh, the street trees and urban canopy is, are literally the lungs of our city. So I think as we think about things, um, in our specific districts, I think it's really important to know that what happens in District 2 matters to District 8 and what happens around our city, um, and how many trees we have. Um, it, it deeply impacts, um, our health. So I'm really grateful to Counselor Flynn for... So I'm really grateful to Counselor Flynn for filing this. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clark, please add Counselor Fitzgerald, Mahia, Zepata, Murphy, Santana, Weber, Worrell. Please add the chair. This docket, docket number 0252, will be referred to the Committee on Environmental Justice Resiliency in Parks. Mr. Clark, would you please read docket number 0253?
Docket number 0253, Counselor Flynn, offer the following: Order for a hearing to discuss the goals and priorities of the City of Boston's Office of Veteran Services.
The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. You have the floor. Sorry.
Madam Chair, may I add Counselor Murphy as an original cosponsor?
Counselor Murphy is so added. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Madam Chair, this is a refile. The City of Boston Office of Veteran Services works closely with our veterans, military families, connect them to resources and services that they've earned. And they work closely with our state and federal partners to empower and support veterans, military families. We have a diverse veterans community here in Boston in critical needs that they, that they want us to focus on. It's important for us to ensure that the services and resources are there. We support all veterans. We support all veterans, especially those that need gender-specific health care. For women veterans, respect health care for our LGBTQ veterans as well. Housing services for our homeless veterans. As we know, the largest population of homeless veterans now is women veterans. Veterans and military families proudly served our country. A few years ago, the city council voted to cut veteran services. This was the most disappointing year on the council when that vote took place. It's important that elected officials always stand with our veterans. I hope we can have this hearing to discuss this important issue. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The chair recognize, oh, okay. Would you like to speak on this matter, Counselor Murphy? Oh, you, okay. The chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. This is a refile, so I wasn't going to go to you if I didn't see your light on. But you have the floor.
Yes, but like it was stated last week by other colleagues, to many watching, it may be new and was not, you know, and I was added on the floor as an original cosponsor, so I do just want to speak on it. Thank you, Counselor Flynn, for filing this. One of the things I learned, and I'm my first budget cycle four budgets ago, was how small our budget is for the veteran services. So it's important that we're making sure they have everything they need. So I think this is very timely to make sure we're talking with Commissioner Santiago and his team to make sure that whatever goals and priorities, if we can expand in any way and support going into the budget season to make sure they have the resources necessary to support our veterans. So thank you. As you know, as a daughter and proud mother of a veteran, happy to make sure that we're doing everything we can for our residents in the city of Boston who are veterans and their families.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clark, please add Counselors Zepata, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Santana, Weber, Worrell. Please add the chair. This docket, docket number 0253, will be referred to the Committee on Veterans, Military Families, and Military Affairs. Mr. Clark, would you please read docket number 0254?
Docket number 0254, Counselor Worrell, offer the following: Order for a hearing to discuss long-term city job vacancies.
The chair recognizes Counselor Worrell. Counselor Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to add Counselor Fitzgerald as a original cosponsor.
Counselor Fitzgerald is so added. Counselor Worrell, you have the floor.
And I'd like to suspend the rule and add, rules and add Counselor Mahia as a third original cosponsor.
Counselor Worrell should suspend the rules and add Counselor Mahia as a third original cosponsor, seeing and hearing no objections. She's so added. Counselor Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is a refile, and I just believe that as a body and as a city, we should have an annual conversation about the job vacancy, job vacancies here in the city of Boston. As of April 2024, we had 2,000 vacancies, and that was across many departments, public safety, education, and public health. I think as a city and as a body, we should be taking a look at how we can possibly repurpose, make those jobs better, hear about the recruitment strategies to promote those jobs for future years, or every year. So looking forward to having this conversation on job vacancies. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to add? Thank you, Counselor Fitzgerald. I see, trying to move it along, like you said, and like I wanted. Anyone else looking to add their name? The chair, Mr. Clark, please add Counselors Zepata, Durkin, Murphy, Weber. Please add the chair. This docket, docket number 0254, will be referred to the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development. Mr. Clark, would you please read docket number 0255?
Docket number 0255, Counselor Flynn, offer the following: Order for a hearing to discuss new cancer presumptions announced by the United States Department of Veterans Affairs.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last week, the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs, under the leadership obviously of President Biden, Vice President Harris, they announced an expansion of several types of cancers to be presumptive for service connection. That basically means that veterans that were diagnosed with these various types of cancers, it will make it easier for them to apply for benefits at the VA so that they can receive, it might be compensation, it might be expanded access to health care. This important announcement follows the signing of the PAC Act by President Biden in 2022, and the opportunity to work closely with Commissioner Santiago in lobbying Congress during that period of time. That expanded benefits to over 3.5 million U.S. servicemembers and veterans exposed to burn pits, Agent Orange, other toxic substance while serving overseas. I was always also exposed to many of these burn pits and environmental challenges. Prior to the PAC Act passage, many veterans lacked the proper documentation evidence to prove that these toxic exposures to receive treatment. I'm calling for this hearing to discuss the new VA announcement, how we can work with the city's Office of Veteran Services, and to provide resources for our Gulf War and post-9/11 veterans who want to seek care through the VA. Also, this is an opportunity for us to acknowledge and respect our Vietnam veterans to ensure that if there is any type of cancers that they were diagnosed with that were previously not recognized by the VA, that those types of cancer now can be factored in in terms of their compensation and medical care. Returning Vietnam veterans were not treated with respect when they came back home. And we need to continue to work together to ensure that we always update and ensure that policies that take place at the VA respect our Vietnam veterans and their families too. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Counselor Flynn. And this is a perfect example of when laws change and we get new information that our Office of Veteran Services may need to adjust their goals and priorities. So looking forward to this hearing and making sure that his team over at Veteran Services has all the support they need. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clark, could you please add Counselors Durkin, Fitzgerald, Mahia, Santana, Weber, Worrell? Please add the chair. This docket, docket number, oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were a cosponsor on the docket. And Counselor Murphy, can you add her to, okay. Thank you. Docket number 02, docket number 0255 will be referred to the Committee on Veterans, Military Families, and Military Affairs. Mr. Clark, would you please read docket number 0256?
Docket number 0256, Counselor Flynn, offer the following: Order for a hearing to discuss discrepancies in Boston's 2024 detainer requests.
The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I'm calling for this hearing to discuss the discrepancies in the number of detainer requests received from the city of Boston. Last week, the Boston Police Department communicated in a letter to the clerk and to the city council that it had rejected 15 detainer requests in the United States Immigration Customs Enforcement in 2024. Media reports later indicated that ICE disputed that claim and that there were probably 198 immigration detainer requests, far higher than the Boston Police Department reported. Reports indicated that the criminal charges on the detainer request include violent and serious crimes such as armed robbery, assault with a dangerous weapon, assault and battery on a police officer, assault and murder, possession of a firearm, possession of a large-capacity weapon, possession with intent to distribute fentanyl, trafficking of heroin, indecent assault and battery, and others. There was a large discrepancy in the numbers, obviously. It is important that this party in the public are provided clarification and explanation of those discrepancies to dispel any concerns. Whether we support ICE or we don't support ICE, it's important that we get accurate information. In my opinion, when someone commits a crime regardless of immigration status, we can't stand in the way of justice for a victim or respect for the rule of law in society. There have been media reports that these discrepancies have something to do with the use of a fax machine and/or emails. I don't know. We can't put public safety at risk due to administrative and logistical issue. It is critical we get Boston police and federal partners on the same page with a positive working relationship, especially when it comes to addressing violent and serious offenses. I think we all agree that sending, sending in or receiving a fax regarding a detainer is not the most appropriate way for this to take place. There has to be some type of log system where we know exactly how many detainers are being received by and from the Boston police. I also sent a letter to Commissioner Cox asking if he would meet with the ICE director here in Boston to resolve the issue. I hope to hear more from the Boston police with regard to these numbers. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Is, would, would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clark, please add Counselor Murphy. This docket will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clark, would you please read docket number 0257?
Docket number 0257, Counselor Flynn, offer the following: Order for a hearing to discuss accessibility in Boston City Hall.
The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Americans with Disability Act is arguably one of the most important pieces of federal legislation on the book. I filed this hearing order because it is critical that we make accessibility a top priority for all in our city, especially our seniors, persons with disabilities. Just last week, I talked at the council about how our friend Mike, the 14th city councillor, was unable to access the chamber for a short period of time through that door. We know that over the years, Boston City Hall has made improvements to ensure compliance with ADA, improve accessibility for persons with disabilities. Some of these examples include a new accessible entrance on the second floor, a sloping promenade in City Hall Plaza renovation in 2022, which began under the leadership of Mayor Walsh and was completed under Mayor Wu. There was also the installation of a vertical lift at the city council's third-floor entrance at the mezzanine level. I don't necessarily like that lift. I think we can do better than that lift. However, there is more work to be done to improve accessibility inside the building. Aging infrastructure continues to limit accessibilities in certain areas, such as the broken escalators connecting the second and third floor as well as half-floor between the second and third floor in City Hall labeled the third floor on the north elevator. As we all know, these escalators have been down for some quite time, maybe over a year. It's important to review access within other parts of the building to ensure those with disabilities can fully access all floors, departments, meeting rooms when they visit City Hall. Residents and neighbors tell me it may be difficult and confusing for them sometimes to navigate City Hall when they are trying to obtain city services, especially when they have to reach multiple departments. They may come in from the City Hall Plaza or Congress Street from the garage area and use the south elevator to go pay a ticket or get a birth certificate on the second floor or visit assessing on the, on the third floor. But with the escalator down, they have to take the stairs or navigate their way to find the north elevator to get the tax collection division or tax assistance center or, and/or the City of Boston Credit Union. And that kind of half-floor between the mezzanine area on the third floor and the second floor. I know, I know this issue very well because I've been coming to City Hall maybe 40 years. In November, I reached out to Commissioner Shelton, who mentioned that the existing escalators have been fully decommissioned as they are beyond repair, not code compliant, and no longer considered to meet accessibility standards. He also mentioned that the city is working to replace these escalators with new stairs and a fully accessible four-stop elevator. And while the design phase is ongoing, but the timeline for construction and completion remains unclear. I also highlighted the safety of the main staircase on the third floor in the hearing order. The short length of the bricks and the reflective shine make it difficult to see, especially when you're walking down from the fifth floor to the third floor. And while the current guardrails help, I believe the safety of these stairs need to be enhanced and prevent people from tripping and getting seriously hurt. Basically, the area where a lot of the functions take place right below the fifth floor, where we celebrated Three Kings Day two weeks ago, that's the area I'm specifically talking about. For many seniors and persons with disability, it's very difficult to get there. Have we ever seen a person in a wheelchair actually come up that lift? I have, but it's not happened many times. That's a reason we need to change that. I don't believe it's respectful to persons with disabilities. I believe those staircase, those stairs are unsafe. When you're walking down those stairs, if you ever fell, your life could be over. I'm not, I'm not being dramatic here, but I do believe it's that serious. I look forward to this hearing order to discuss these issues. Improving accessibility on the second and third floor must be a priority. I want to recognize the important work that Chief Irish, Commissioner Shelton, Commissioner McCosh are continuing to do to make City Hall more accessible. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Counselor Flynn, for this thoughtful hearing order. Looking forward to this conversation. I know when we had a hearing here in the chamber about the lift, I spoke how my Auntie Kay could not come to my swearing-in in 2021. We were outside, as some of us here remember, in the cold, being sworn in outside the mezzanine there, and she was not able to access. So she had to miss out on that event because we weren't able to get her to that level in the building. And I'm still shocked that, you know, four years here working in City Hall, and I know long before coming, that those escalators are still not working, that we definitely need to be using some of our rainy day fund to fix that. I know, like you're saying, we're going to talk about it. But for years now, we've had broken escalators and elevators that stop people from accessing the city's building. It should be, especially talking about making it a landmark, and it's such an important building here in the city of Boston, that we need to make sure it's accessible at all floors, from all doors, from all ways in and out, and that no one feels that there are certain rooms or spaces that they don't belong, because that's what we're telling people. You don't belong here if we're not making sure that you can easily get there. And we need to make sure we're remembering people's dignity. People in wheelchairs or who have mobility issues do not want to make a scene or feel like people have to lift them in any way, so we need to do better. So looking forward to not just having this hearing, but making sure that the funds are available and that this work gets started as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. You have the floor.
Thank you so much. I just want to thank Counselor Flynn for this hearing order. I know that last week I brought to the floor, which I've provided a communication about, but I brought to the floor the landmarking of City Hall. So I think the communication that I offered, which is on all of your desks, shares that City Hall became a landmark on Monday. But I did want to ensure that we spoke about the accessibility work that's been done by Commissioner Shelton, which I know Counselor Flynn mentioned, and Commissioner McCosh. I think they are working really hard to make sure that this building, despite its, you know, despite its architectural integrity and importance, also meets those needs for every single city worker and every person who needs to access this building. And I know from speaking with Commissioner Shelton and Chief Irish that they share these goals as well. So I'm excited for this hearing. And actually, I look out onto the, I know Counselor Flynn looks out to Faneuil Hall. I look out to the center of, of our courtyard. And I feel like there are ways in which we should make sure that all of our areas that have been shut down since 9/11 have access. Like, and we're thinking of ways to make this building more accessible to everyone. So I appreciate. So I appreciate, even in the ways that we've landmarked the building, making sure that it can live up to its original use. So thank you so much to everyone for engaging that conversation and excited to celebrate City Hall as a landmark this summer when the National Architectural Conference comes to Boston. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clark, please add Counselors Klauda Zapata, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Mejia, Murphy, Santana, Weber, Worrell. Please have the chair. This docket, docket number 0257, will be referred to Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology. Mr. Clark, please read docket number 0258.
At the request of Counselor Flynn, docket number 0258 has been withdrawn.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, please read docket number 0259.
Docket number 0259, Counselor Flynn, offer the following: Order for a hearing to discuss the status of the elevators at the BHA Ruth Barclay Apartments.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I filed a hearing regarding aging elevator systems at BHA. In November, I held a hearing on this issue, and I'm sorry, many of my colleagues weren't here for it because it was an exceptional hearing, and we heard directly from residents from the south end at Ruth Barclay. These were heart-wrenching stories. They talked about not being able to get groceries, pick up medication, staying active, going to medical, family and social apartments. I mentioned a woman that was unable to get to her chemotherapy appointment because the elevator was broke. They talked about not being able to get upstairs and use the bathroom in time. We have to make accessibility for persons with disabilities and our seniors a priority. It's a civil rights issue. It's an equity issue at Ruth Barclay and throughout BHA developments. In December 2024, residents let me know that the elevator outages have continued. I visited them many times. One resident missed, as I mentioned, two chemotherapy sessions as a result of these down elevators. Can you imagine that? Waiting, getting ready for your chemotherapy appointment, ready to leave your apartment, and the elevator doesn't work in Ruth Barclay. And we're not outraged. Administrator Bark recently communicated that BHA is working towards an elevator modernization plan to install eight new elevators at Ruth Barclay and has put it out to a bid. This was just recent. Well, this is a step in the right direction. It is imperative that the BHA continue to communicate these plans and protocols in a timely manner to residents. Ensure the residents do not miss any critical medical appointments, screenings, visits with their family. Elevator access is essential for our seniors, persons with disabilities. This hearing will again, will discuss the latest status of the BHA elevator modernization at Ruth Barclay Apartments and plans to accommodate those who need to go to critical medical appointments during these elevator outages. In the final analysis, we talk about spending a lot of money on various programs and initiatives. I can't think of what could be a better use of our time, effort, and money than focusing on ADA accessibility, civil rights, equity, respect, most of all, for our neighbors and the Boston Housing Authority. And finally, we don't have a choice. If we are not in compliant with ADA-related issues, it's a federal issue. We're subjected to federal law. I'm only going to allow this to continue for a short period of time, and then I'm going to send a letter from me to the Executive Director or the Secretary of the United States Housing and Urban Development in letting them know that residents in many of our BHA developments are not able to get to medical appointments because of the elevator situation. It's that serious of an issue. It's life and death. We can't sit back and say, "Well, I'm not getting involved in that because I don't want to offend a previous colleague of mine." I'm not worried about that. I'm worried about the constituents. I'm worried about the residents. I'm worried about them getting to their medical appointment. That's my only priority. An elderly person that wants to visit her family on Thanksgiving, she told me she couldn't go down the elevator system. Her daughter was down there waiting for her, and she couldn't visit her, go out for dinner because the elevator wasn't broken. Another woman told me she was waiting for hours for the elevator to take her to her apartment. She had to use the bathroom. There was no bathroom there. It's about respect. It's about dignity for our BHA residents. We see a lot of money being spent across the country. Why isn't it a priority for residents of Boston Housing Authority? What's wrong with them? They may not have political support. They may not send checks to elected officials. They may not be going to these fancy cocktail parties, but they deserve respect. They deserve dignity. And it's about time we start showing it to them. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clark, please add Counselors Klauda Zapata, Fitzgerald, Mejia, Murphy, Santana, Weber, Worrell. Please have the chair. Mr. Clark, would you please read docket number 0260? Oh, that docket, docket number 0259, will be referred to Committee on Housing and Community Development. Mr. Clark, would you please read docket number 0260?
Docket number 0260, Counselors Worrell and Braden offer the following: Order for a hearing to discuss the use of battery energy storage systems in the city of Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Worrell. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a refile from last year, and Counsel Braden and Counsel Peppin led the way on this important issue. So we're eager to continue that momentum, and we were asked by Counsel Braden to refile this. The battery energy storage systems have the potential to strengthen our energy grid and support our transition to renewable energy, but they also raise safety and community concerns. We're proposing facilities in Brighton and potentially Dorchester or Rosendale. We're looking to make sure that we have a public conversation on best practices on seeing if there's anything that we as a city should be implementing as we expand our energy grid. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clark, please add Counselors Klauda Zapata, Durkin, Mejia, Murphy, Santana, Weber. Please have the chair. Docket number 0260 will be referred to the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency, and Parks. Mr. Clark, would you please read docket number 0261?
Docket number 0261, Counselor Weber, offer the following: Order for a hearing to address programming needs for older adults in the city of Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to add Counsel Fitzgerald as an original cosponsor.
Counsel Fitzgerald is so added.
And I would like to suspend the rules and add Counsel Worrell as a third cosponsor.
Counsel Weber, please suspend the rules and add Counsel Worrell as a third original cosponsor. Seeing and hearing no objections. Counsel Worrell is so added. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I think providing for our seniors is something that I don't think we would ever have a debate on. I think everyone in this council agrees that, you know, it's just a matter of how many resources we can use to provide for our seniors, not whether or not we should. And it's something that is supported by nearly every resident of Boston, regardless of where they land on the political spectrum. Last April, we held a hearing reviewing programming available to seniors in the city of Boston. And since then, AID Strong Commissioner Emily Shea has shared a planning report on the need for expanding programming and spaces for adults 60 and older in Boston. As the report states, by 2030, over 20% of the city's population will be 60 or older, and programming and spaces to gather will support the mental health and the physical health of our seniors as they age. You know, I'm filing this hearing order to explore expanding programming available to older adults, especially in West Roxbury, removing barriers that older adults face when accessing these types of programs, and to discuss the feasibility of creating a senior center in West Roxbury to best serve this growing population. I think Ethos runs a great pop-up at the Elks Lodge in West Roxbury. I was there last week. When I hear from those at the Ethos program, they tell me how beneficial this program is, how much they rely on this program to do activities like chair yoga, you know, and other things, but also just to gather, have a space to meet up with people from all over the city and their fellow seniors. You know, almost two years ago, my predecessor Kendra Lara held a hearing onsite at the senior pop-up in West Roxbury that was co-sponsored by Counselors Flaherty and Madam President Louie Jen. I would like to continue the work that they did, have an onsite hearing in West Roxbury to explore the possibility of expanding programming and see whether a senior center in West Roxbury would be feasible. I look forward to working with all my colleagues on this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fitzgerald. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Counsel Weber put it eloquently, but just in brief, this is all part of trying to keep families in the city. As parents age and as we welcome new families into the city to try and keep them here, it's important that as they age, they do have activities to do and things to keep them active and rooted in the neighborhoods in which they raise their families. So happy to take part in this, and thank you, Counsel Weber, for adding me.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Worrell. You have the floor.
Yes, I'd like to thank Counsel Weber for bringing this forward and adding me as an original cosponsor. And I do agree with my colleagues on just making sure that our seniors have more activities to not only do, but also to get to. I think transportation is also a big part of this conversation, so any way we could pour more money into expanding the hours, expanding, you know, where we can, you know, where they can use that transportation to go to, not just medical appointments. Maybe it's city events, maybe it's, you know, sometimes I hear that our seniors have FOMO. They want to come down here to the flag raisins and to everything that we're doing at City Hall and to concerts as well. But I also just want to give a shout out to Angela Yard, who is my AID Strong liaison, who has been working with me on just doing senior luncheons and engaging the seniors. And I also just wanted to shout out a few people from Dorchester and Mattapan doing senior work. Barbara Crishlow, Marilyn Foreman, Shirley Schillingford, and I know I missed a few other people, but just want to thank everyone in my district doing this work. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clark, please add Counselors Klauda Zapata, Durkin, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Santana. Please have the chair. This docket, docket number 0261, will be referred to the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities. Mr. Clark, would you please read docket number 0262?
Docket number 0262, Counsel Ad Durkin, offer the following: Order for a hearing to discuss the creation of a Parks Administrator for Downtown Parks, including the Boston Common, Public Garden, Commonwealth Avenue Mall, Copley Square, and Christopher Columbus Park.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Durkin. Counsel Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. I'd like to add you, Council President Louie Jen, as a second or as a cosponsor, and I'd like to add Counselor Coletta Zapata as a third cosponsor.
I am added as a second cosponsor. I'll add Counselor Klauda Zapata.
Oh, perfect, okay. Earlier this week, temporary fencing was placed along the Beacon Street Mall in the Boston Common due to a water main rehabilitation project by the Boston Water and Sewer Commission. While the project is necessary, the lack of prior communication with residents highlights a critical gap in our park management. If Boston had a dedicated Downtown Parks Administrator, this issue could have led to a much more effective and coordinated effort. A Parks Administrator would have ensured that relevant stakeholders were notified of this project well in advance and that pedestrian access and detour routes were clearly marked before a main thoroughfare was blocked off to minimize disruptions. Thank you to the Friends of the Public Garden for their continued advocacy and support of the creation of this vital role. While we work in partnership with them to ensure our downtown parks are treated with care, they have also advocated for a Downtown Parks Administrator. This issue underscores why the creation of a Parks Administrator is essential to the success of the Boston Common Master Plan. With over $150 million in proposed investments, we cannot implement this vision without someone specifically dedicated to overseeing the operation and programming of our downtown parks. A Parks Administrator would centralize management, ensure that our parks remain clean, safe, and climate resilient. There is currently a Franklin Park Administrator, so we have a model on which this role can function. Last year, my council colleagues supported the creation of this new position, and I hope you will support it again with this refiling. We must prioritize this role to ensure the future of Boston's downtown parks, which are used by everyone and are for everyone. It's not just about preserving green space. It's about providing clear communication, thoughtful planning, and effective management of everyone who uses them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Durkin. We will add Counselor
We will add Counselor Klauda Zapata as a third later on. Would anyone else like to add their name? Oh, Counsel Flynn, are you looking to speak on this docket? The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Please add my name. Some of these areas, some of these parks are actually in District 2, especially the Copley Square area. Across the street from the Boston Common is the area I represent. I have worked on these issues for seven years as a district city council. I know these issues very well. I do support an administrator for these areas. I want to make that clear. But in the interest of fairness, and I know there's one, obviously, at Franklin Park, which we all support, but in the interest of fairness, is there an opportunity also to expand this to other parks across the city that may also feel like that they need an administrator at various parks, whether it's through a combined jurisdiction where we're able to combine a couple of neighborhoods? I'm kind of thinking out loud, but I just don't want to say only the downtown area can benefit from this good proposal. I want to see if there's an opportunity for other parks across the city can also benefit as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mejia. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The good thing is that I'm very consistent. So like, when I didn't support other things that we were trying to pass, like, I usually I show up consistently in opposition of slowing things down. I just had an afterthought. So, but anyways, I am, I'm really grateful. I think I mentioned in some hearing or maybe in one of these council meetings that it wasn't until I became a citywide councillor that I actually even went to a park that was in, I think, in the north end of Columbus Park, I think it's called. But, and it's startling, right, that city kids never venture outside of their backyards, right? So we don't really go to the Boston Commons. We don't really go to, you know, all these other little, you know, spaces and places. And I think that I would love to see the administrator in that role also looking at how they can bring in more people of color into some of these parks. Because I think it's not just about maintaining the grounds. It's also making sure that low-income people also know that those are their parks too, right? So South Boston, Charlestown, Dorchester, Roxbury, Mattapan, those are areas that normally don't venture out. Well, I'll speak for myself. Like, growing up here in the city of Boston, I never really went downtown, unless it was to Tellos. Maybe you probably know what Tellos, but you probably don't know. But anyway, this is a store. But all of this to say is that I think that whatever we do, we always should just really be mindful of making sure that we don't have unintended consequences and that we're utilizing these opportunities to be more inclusive. And I'm not just saying black and brown people. I'm talking about low-income people. I'm talking about Roxbury, Charlestown, West Roxbury. I'm talking about spaces and places that normally don't go all the way down there. But that that should be part of the role of the administrator. I'd love to just add that as consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clark, please add Counselors Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Santana, Weber. This docket, docket number 0262, will be referred to Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency, and Parks. Mr. Clark, would you please read docket number 0263?
Docket number 0263, Counsel Ad Durkin, offer the following: Order for a hearing to explore the creation of a citywide merchandise licensing program.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Durkin. Counsel Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Council President. It's quite an exciting idea, and I know I've gotten so much feedback from folks who work in this industry. Boston is a world-class city, celebrated for our rich history, vibrant neighborhoods, and unmatched cultural legacy. Yet many of our symbols and logos that embody Boston's identity remain unlicensed, leaving untapped opportunities for revenue and community engagement. But there's been an update since I introduced this idea. We found, we did a lot of research. We found that Boston obviously can generate revenue. New York City brings in over $24 million annually. Beyond revenue, this initiative's goal is to foster pride among our residents and visitors and to highlight our city of Boston-owned businesses. I'm proud to announce that I'm engaging with the BU Queston School and MBA students there who are undertaking a volunteer who are undertaking a volunteer consulting study this semester to help guide the potential structure of this program. This hearing will allow us to hear from a broad swath of stakeholders across the city to evaluate the potential benefits and costs and consider how we best structure this. I know we've got abundance of creativity in this city, so creativity isn't the problem. Let's set up the structure, let's think about how we can do it. And I know there's a lot of excitement from city departments, and I've begun those conversations, so I think it's time for a hearing and excited to have it this year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Durkin. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Fitzgerald, Mahia, Santana, Weber. This docket, docket number, docket number 0263, will be referred to Committee on Small Business and Professional Licenseure. Mr. Clerk, can we come back to 0264?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, could you please read dockets number 0265?
Docket number 0265, Counselors Murphy and Flynn, offer the following: Order for a hearing to discuss the preservation of historical artifacts in the Boston Public Schools slated for closure or merger.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to make sure I'm on the record that I understand the need and the importance to address declining enrollment, the underutilization of schools, and the challenges of aging buildings that we've been dealing with for decades here in the city of Boston, but also that we must ensure that it's a thoughtful closure, merger, and new construction process going forward. And as we speak, the community at the Dever School is picketing outside their school because they're still trying to grapple with the announcement that they heard a couple weeks ago about their school being chosen to be one that's closed. But one thing that may not have been on the mind of many, but I want to thank Counselor Flynn and happy that he signed on to this hearing order with me, he brought to light some important information, and this is that Boston Public Schools, the ones that have recently been proposed, the closure and merger of several schools, including Excel High School, Dever Elementary, and the Mary Lyne Pilot School as part of the long-term facilities plan. Many of these schools have histories spanning well over a century and contain significant historical artifacts and memorabilia such as plaques, photographs, documents, and memorials that reflect Boston's rich educational heritage. The closure of these schools raises concerns about the preservation of these historical artifacts, which are vital to maintaining the community's historical fabric and honoring the legacy of Boston's educational institutions. Counselor Flynn has highlighted the importance of preserving significant memorials, including the World War I Memorial at Excel High School, which honors veterans who served in both World War I wars, underscoring the need for a comprehensive preservation plan. And I think the clerk will be happy to know that I've included the archivist here, that the city of Boston has a responsibility to ensure that the historical artifacts from schools undergoing closure or merger are carefully preserved, transported, and stored in a manner that prevents deterioration and allows for continued public access and educational use. So I'm looking forward to this hearing to discuss a plan and including the city archivist and others involved. I do just want to highlight, probably over a decade ago, when there were changes in fire code laws, there was a mass of removing many teachers' personal belongings when they had brought in couches or chairs or furniture to brighten up their classrooms, and we saw that many belongings, truckloads of people's personal belongings, were brought to the Campbell Resource Center, and then no one knew where they had gone after that, and many people were pulling up, I would see them on Dorchester Ave in trucks, just filling their truck with these belongings that had belonged to someone. So I know from past, sometimes we start to move things, but we need to make sure, and I hope that my colleagues agree, that we need a plan in place to make sure that the artifacts that are important to our city are preserved in a proper way. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Counselor Murphy, for allowing me to join you as a co-sponsor. The closing of Excel High School, formerly South Boston High School, in my district is a huge loss to the school community. The last remaining high school in South Boston, a tragic loss for the many families who attended and graduated from South Boston High School, Excel High School. I also taught there as a substitute schoolteacher as well. This is a school with a diverse population, and as it closes, it is imperative for BPS in the city to provide clear information to the school community on their plans, transitions, while also exercising transparency with the people of South Boston in the city regarding the future of the building. It's important to note that Excel High School, the building, has a long history. South Boston High School is over a century old, and the school has produced many veterans since its beginning. There's a beautiful World War I Memorial onsite, as well as veterans related and other memorabilia in the building that is very important to the history of our city and our neighborhood. Many South Boston residents reached out to me, asking what's going to be, what's going to happen to the memorabilia, including my friend Kevin Conroy, who's a United States Marine, including the Perkins Post veterans, Pat and Timmy Murphy and all of those guys, people on the McDonough Post reached out to me, asking what's happened, the Fitzgerald Post, the disabled American veterans, the South Boston Allied War veterans, Tommy Lyons and the Vietnam veterans, South Boston grad, South Boston High School graduates, including Congressman Lynch and Mayor Flynn, asked me as well. It's important to note that it's critical for this school and the school community and for our teachers, our students, and the school building that we also are intentional, as Counselor Murphy mentioned, preserve our memorials and monuments dedicated to the remarkable service and sacrifice of our veterans and military families, as well as any other memorabilia relating to the history of South Boston and its people. Maybe we get the South Boston Historical Society involved. The Perkins Post wants to be active, the, maybe BCYF, maybe Bob Ellison and other people that want to get involved. I'd also like to know that there is, there was a wonderful, there is a wonderful Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps, JROTC Leadership Program at Excel that I fought like hell to keep open for seven years. Every BPS administrator tried to close this, and I kept fighting with everybody to keep it open. But you won't see a more diverse group of students up at Excel High School or anywhere in the city than the kids in the JROTC program, and they're learning about leadership, and they're learning about accountability, and they're learning about responsibility, and they're learning about hard work and determination. We have an obligation also to ensure that those students have an opportunity to continue their studies in the Junior ROTC program. Most of them are not South Boston residents, most of them are kids across the city, and they come to Excel High School because of this Junior ROTC program. They're not wealthy kids, they have no influence, they're not able to pick up the phone and call an elected official to ask for their help, but here we are, we're closing their school. We're closing their school, and we're taking something very meaningful away from them, and that's the ROTC program. And when we turn our backs on students of color like that, we're hurting a generation of Bostonians. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Fitzgerald, Mahia, Worrell, please add the Chair. This docket, docket number 0265, will be referred to the Committee on Education. Mr. Clerk, can we please return to docket 0264? Uh, sorry, 02...
64.
Yeah, okay, that's correct.
Docket number 0264, Counselor Louis Jen, offer the following: Order for a hearing regarding strategies to expand homeownership programs in Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor President Louis Jen. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're filing this, this hearing order, and I'd like to add yourself as an original co-sponsor.
The Chair is so added as an original co-sponsor. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you. We're filing this hearing order to really explore the ways that to, it also says expand homeownership programs, but it's really about making sure that folks who are, who are homeowners are, are able to retain that homeownership. My office has been working a lot with people facing foreclosure, and you know, has had, have had a number of successes recently on preventing some of those foreclosures, but we've had conversations even last term with the Community Land Trust about ways that we can work holistically to help preserve homeownership throughout our city, particularly looking at some neighborhoods like Mattapan where there's a lot of homeownership, and there's particularly a lot of black homeownership, and how we're making sure that folks don't feel like they can't retain their homes, either because they're facing foreclosure or that they have other barriers. And so we've done a lot of work with Community Land Trust to explore programs that, that ideas that might be able to work that are pretty innovative and that are like, you know, when we're talking about the Accelerator Fund, building alternatives to the market, I think that's why I think Community Land Trusts do incredible work, because they are all about alternatives to a market that is responding purely to, you know, profit model. And oftentimes, our, our seniors are susceptible to either selling their home because they can't afford to stay in there, and so Community Land Trusts have, we've been having interesting conversations with them about programs that would help keep our seniors, particularly in their home, and also think about more community-based models for, for homeownership. So I'm excited to explore this and to, and to have folks from the Neighborhood Homes Initiative and others here to talk about ways that we can address these issues, to really preserve homeownership. And I know a lot of the plans that the city has been putting out has actually envisioned working in partnership with Community Land Trust on some of these ideas, so I just wanted to memorialize this here as we continue to have those conversations. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm excited for this hearing order, so thank you for bringing it forward, Madam President. I am a big advocate for homeownership. I too hear from our seniors oftentimes that own these, you know, big old three families and two families and their old homes, and a lot of our seniors, even parents, have a house that's built in the 1900s, 1940s, so the roofs and the cost to, to fix any of those items have gone up, but yet their income hasn't, they're on a fixed income. So looking forward to making sure that we can find ways to make sure that we're keeping people in the home so they're not faced with that question of, do we sell, or, you know, do we just, you know, make those important decisions against selling or staying and not being able to fix, you know, the roof or the furnace or, or, you know, any other major ticket item in their home. Would anyone else like to speak on the matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, could you please add Counselor Fitzgerald, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mahia, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Santana, and Counselor Weber? Thank you. Docket number 0138 will refer to the Committee on Housing and Community Development.
0264.
Oh, 0264 will be referred to the Committee on Housing and Community Development.
Thank you, Counselor, and apologies, Mr. Clerk, I forgot to take that out of order. I know that it messed up your system. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0266?
Docket number 0266, Counselor Flynn, offer the following: Order for a hearing to discuss pedestrian safety, traffic calming, and expanding the Safety Surge Program in the city of Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, may I add Counselor Santana as an original co-sponsor?
Counselor Santana is so added.
And may I suspend the rule and add Counselor Fitzgerald as well?
Counselor Flynn sees suspend the rules, add Counselor Fitzgerald as a third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections. Counselor Fitzgerald is so added. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a hearing to discuss measures, measures that would improve pedestrian safety, traffic calming, and the possibility of expanding the Safe Surge Program in Boston. I continue to call for these hearings because I believe pedestrian safety is one of the most important issue we face. Tragically, on Sunday, a pedestrian was killed in my neighborhood in Andrew Square. I won't get into the details, it's an ongoing investigation. Last year, a four-year-old child was fatally struck by a truck at Sleeper Street in Congress Street in the Fort Point neighborhood. As of October 2024, there were 137 crashes, eight pedestrian fatalities in Boston last year. Following that tragic incident, we implemented various measures to improve visibility and safety. I advocated for speed humps to slow speeding cars down. They were put on Sleeper Street, but I can continue to believe they should be put on Congress Street as well, or raised crosswalk outside the Children's Museum as well. These tragedies remind us of the work that we must do, that we must continue to do to realize Vision Zero in terms of the traffic calming infrastructure improvements, slower speeds, enhanced traffic enforcement by the Boston Police. I was active in recommending the reduction of the speed limit in the city of Boston. In fact, I think it should be reduced again. 25 miles an hour, in my opinion, is excessive driving throughout the city of Boston. It should be 20 miles an hour. In 2018, I recommended a 12-point pedestrian plan for South Boston and to the city, which featured traffic calming infrastructure like speed humps, raised crosswalks, rapid flash beacons with pedestrian islands in the middle of the road, curb extensions, among other things. That same year, I also called for and held a hearing with Counselor Frank Baker to advocate for reducing the speed limit. I want to acknowledge the important work Counselor Baker has done as well. In 2023, we all know that the city of Boston implemented the Safety Surge Program, where the city installed zones of speed humps on eligible neighborhood streets. However, currently, the speed humps program is only being installed on side streets, but not on main streets, commercial roads, high-traffic corridors, and bus routes. I continue to advocate that the areas are exactly where our speed humps are needed. Where raised crosswalks, pedestrian islands, rapid flash beacons, and curb extensions should be going as well. Our focus needs also, as I mentioned, to be slowing down vehicles. Our neighborhood Main Street, commercial roads, high-traffic corridors, bus routes are often dangerous for pedestrians to cross. I know, my parents tell me almost every day of them walking up to the South Boston Public Library from their home, five or six blocks, and when they're in the middle of an intersection walking up L Street, a car, a car would go right by them, just missing two elderly, elderly people. We also see that happening when young, young families are in the crosswalk, little kids, people are just so impatient that they have to go 30 miles an hour up L Street and take people's lives in jeopardy. But I'll close with this. It can't be a one-size-fits-all approach across the city anymore in with the road diet and a bike lane. L Street, as I mentioned, is one of the most narrow roads in the city, and cars and communities continue to fly there, so right sizing, as they call it, is not always the answer. One size does not fit all. To be clear, for the wise guys on social media, I advocated for the road diet and a bike lane down Day Boulevard in South Boston years ago in my 12-point plan. We had crashes and fatalities with people speeding and cars commuting off the highway. That's where people come off 93 and use that road. But it has to be a thoughtful approach with each location and situation. That particular one doesn't hinder our first responders getting through a narrow street or harm our small businesses as well. In closing, last year, I also asked the Fire Commissioner in a city council hearing about speed humps, and he said it was not an issue on main streets. Again, I'm asking, let's get more speed humps on many of the main streets in Boston. So I think we need to get BTD and our first responders in a room, listen to the Boston Fire Department, listen to the Boston Police Department, and our EMS, not just the leadership, the rank-and-file workers, and talk, and listen to them about traffic calming measures, raised infrastructure in main streets, commercial roads, high-traffic corridors, and bus routes. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Was Counselor Santana second? Were you second or third?
Second.
Okay. Oh, it's a re, okay, I didn't realize it was a refile. Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Mahia, Murphy, Weber, Worrell, please add the Chair. Docket number 0266 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Mr. Clerk, would you please read...
on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0267?
Docket number 0267, Counselors Murphy and Flynn offer the following: Order for a hearing to discuss Boston Public Schools' transportation for student athletes.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. I guess technically it's a refile, but not really. I've updated with new information. And also, I do just want to go on the record, not because of any lack of support or hard work from the Chair, Counselor Santana. We did have a very hard time last year trying to get this hearing scheduled and to have a conversation with the Transportation Department and also the Athletics Department. And so later in the year, when Counsel Flynn and I had filed the hearing order for a different related transportation hearing, we did combine the two dockets. But at that hearing, no one from the Athletics Department came to speak. And we had reached out to some coaches and teachers who then were asked not to speak. And I understand, as many of us, if all of us, understand that many times they're asked not to speak up, but they do call us and we do get the information. And they do hope that we use our platform to advocate for our student athletes. So it's important to me that we have this hearing and that we speak because just a few weeks ago, got a call from a concerned parent that their junior driver, on an evening with, you know, cold winter night, because the bus didn't show up for a hockey game that was in Lowell, was trying to fit hockey bags and classmates into his car to drive a long way, which we know, one, it's illegal to have to be driving young kids, and there's a certain limit. You have to have your license, rightfully so for safety reasons for a long time. But our student athletes are put in bad situations, our coaches, our families, and we have to make sure that we address it. And knowing that our bus budget will be at around 184 million, up over 10 million from the current year, and we have to make sure that it's part of the conversation, that there's some sort of accountability, that as we spend hundreds of millions of dollars on buses, that we're prioritizing our student athletes getting to their games safely. To me, the priority is always safety first, but it is important that this conversation happens. And I'm really hoping the administration does allow those who can give us the data, because without the proper data, we can't effectively advocate and make sure that we're doing the changes we need to, to make sure our students aren't stuck at school trying to get to fields or hockey rinks and unable to do what for many of them is the reason they showed up at school in the first place. It's very important to them that we do this right for them. So thank you.
Thank you. And just to make sure the refile Counsel Flynn was originally on it, but I'd like to suspend the rule and add Counsel Fitzgerald on the new. Counsel Murphy sees suspend the rules, add Counsel Fitzgerald as a third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections. Counsel Fitzgerald is so added. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Counsel Murphy, for your continued work on this important issue. The issue of late or missing buses for our BPS student athletes is not new. Last year, school bus failed to show up to pick up our BPS athletes on multiple occasions. In April, the school bus failed to transport the baseball team in South Boston's Excel High School in Boston at BCLA in McCormick to the game at Healy Field in Jamaica Plain. In October, East Boston High School football players waited for an hour for Boston's school bus to take them to play against O'Brien, but the bus never came. In December, according to a media report, another bus failed to pick up East Boston High School athletes for game in Fall River. Residents have contacted me and other city counselors about no-show buses frequently for Boston Latin Academy hockey games. They had to pack all kids and bags in a number of cars, as Counsel Murphy mentioned. Imagine working so hard in your life, training all year, and you can't compete because the bus doesn't show up. This is unacceptable. Our students and athletes, our students, our athletes deserve respect, and it's important for BPS to provide that to them. The budget, as Counsel Murphy mentioned, going to be $184 million, significant amount. We can't continue to normalize late and no-show buses. Finally, some of my district counselors approached me and said, Ed, we agree with you on this issue, but we don't want to speak up because we don't want BPS or the administration mad at us. But will you advocate for us? Because we know it's a major problem. We know it's a major concern in our district. And they're also receiving calls from concerned parents about this issue. So I do want to advocate for my district counselors that didn't want to speak up, but their voice, their voice is important as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fitzgerald. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. My colleagues on this proposal have really said it all, but I just want to sort of recommend too that this is an important subject. We've heard a lot about from, we've gotten a lot of contact about it. And of course, I know we just earlier voted on raising the guaranteed hours for buses as well as the salaries. And so this is again to keep it honest and say, well, we hope that we'll see that reflected in getting kids to their games on time. So thank you.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Weber. You have the floor.
Thank you very much. We have a new intern in our office who plays football at BLA as one of two proud parents of BLA students here. I just thought I'd mention he played in the football, well, okay, well, you're a BLA mom right now. Sorry. Three BLA proud parents. Okay, four. Anyone else? For six. Okay. As proud, proud Boston residents and parents of BPS students, I know we all love BLA. I just thought I'd point out that he played in the football game this year where they beat BLS. I know Counsel Fitzgerald has mixed feelings about that. But we asked him how, I asked him how the football, how the buses were for the football season, and he said, well, they never showed up for any of our away games. He mentioned that he, they had to take Ubers from BLA to East Boston. Thankfully, as they did make it to the game at West Roxbury High to defeat BLS soundly in that game. But, you know, I think this is an important issue. We need to make sure our kids can make it to their sporting events. You know, we, when the transdev hearing, we heard from the administration that they are working on it. I think it's very important. We need to keep working on this issue, and I think our athletes deserve to be able to get to their games. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Weber. The Chair recognizes, I believe, Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to my colleagues. I really do appreciate your hearing order, but I just want to know for the record that I am not one of the district coun, I'm not, you, you were not speaking on my behalf, right? Because you know, okay, because I have no fear of retaliation. But anyways, I do think that there is a issue, specifically because my daughter is also an athlete at BPS. There have been times when we've had to figure things out, and I think it causes a financial burden on a lot of parents. And I think that we have to really look at the budget situation and really use it as an opportunity to look at how we're going to help support families who don't have a vehicle, who don't have an Uber app, but their kids are stranded. So I think that there is definitely something that we can think about outside the box. What other, I know there's this organization called Head Out Those Transportation. I don't even know if they're still around, but back in the day, they used to transport people from space to place. And I think that we need to start thinking about all of the different ways that we can help support parents who have kids that are stranded.
Thanks. The Chair recognizes Counsel Claudia Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thanks to the Makers. I look forward to this hearing. I speak on this as a former BPS athlete. I had to take the train home from Place Step Park to East Boston. That is almost an hour and a half long trek. And I want to shout out Mr. Rocco Zizza, who was my softball coach, who would usually drive me to aquariums so that I can get on the blue line and go home to East Boston. But there have been multiple instances of East Boston kids, young adults, that have been stranded, unfortunately, because of communication errors or scheduling errors, whatever it is, it's unacceptable. I did say this publicly at the hearing, and I have put out a statement in partnership with my state senator and my state representative, and have also sent a letter to BPS regarding this issue. So I thank Counsel Flynn again for speaking on behalf of district counselors. It's on my behalf, so I appreciate it. And I do look forward to hearing from BPS based on this letter and based on conversations that I've had with them. I am a little worried. I'm hopeful that some of the details in the contract that we discussed on Monday, going from 31 to 35 minimum amount of hours, will help this issue. I remain skeptical. I asked Dan Rosen Guard what the plan is between now and July, when that contract kicks in, and there wasn't really an answer. So I look forward to hearing back from the administration. Just want to thank them for their work. I know it's really difficult, and I appreciate again the Makers' leadership on this. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Claudia Zapata. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Thank you to everyone at large and district counselors for the collective advocacy on this, this docket, docket number, oh, would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Claudia Zapata, Mejia, Santana, Weber, Worrell, please add the chair. This docket, docket number 0267, will be referred to the Committee on Education. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0268?
Docket number 0268, Counselors Murphy and Flynn offer the following: Order for a hearing to address the plans underway to do facilities work this summer at several of our buildings that may impact the services we provide.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is my fourth year filing this hearing order, so looking forward to this conversation. This will be the first year, though, as many of us, I hope we all know that at the end of this summer, all of our BCYF buildings and facilities are now under property management, and Commissioner Shelton oversees them, because he did show up to a hearing we had last month on the, looking to find out answers on the Condon Pool, which we're still waiting to find out. And thank you, Counsel Weber, for coming to advocate for the Pool and Yard District also. But knowing going forward that many of our school buildings need not just repairs in the BCYF centers, but the HVAC and other systems throughout the schools, that when they have to close for the summer, which is the perfect time to do the work, that many times it dislocates our summer camps and our special needs students who go to school during the summer, during the extended year. So I've already spoken with Commissioner Shelton this week to let him know that we're hoping to have this hearing in the next couple of months so that if there are any schools or programs that we really have to make sure we communicate early, often, and make sure we have a Plan B if needed for our students and our families and the staff that needs to make sure that they're supported also. So looking forward to this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Counsel Murphy, for the hard work you're doing to my colleagues on the city council as well. Three pools in my district, Josiah Quincy School, the Condon Community School, and the Blackstone School are not open and are in need of critical repairs. What do these three pools have in common? Josiah Quincy School is located in Chinatown in the middle of a community, communities of color neighborhood. The Condon School as well, located in the middle of a public housing development. The Blackstone is between Villa Victoria and Ruth Barclay, the Cathedral Public Housing Development. We need to ensure that every kid in the city has access to a swimming pool and to swimming lessons, especially young people of color. When I was, when I was a young parent, I had the, I had the money, and my wife had the money, to send our kids to private lessons at the Boston Athletic Club. We paid for it. We were fortunate. A lot of, a lot of young families don't have that access. Many families in public housing don't have the ability to do that. They rely on the City of Boston to provide swimming lessons. But how could you provide swimming lessons when the swimming pools are closed? Again, Josiah Quincy School, young Asian students, the Condon School, mostly kids of color in the public housing developments, the Blackstone between Villa Victoria, high concentration of Latino kids, and Ruth Barclay Cathedral, many African-American kids. Give them an opportunity to have swimming lessons. Open these pools today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Was it a refile? Okay. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Claudia Zapata, Fitzgerald, Mejia, Santana, Weber, Worrell, please add the chair. This docket, docket number 0268, will be referred to the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0269?
Docket.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy.
In the past, it has gone to strong women, families, and communities.
Okay, the clerk's office put it in City Services, but I'm happy to put it in strong women, families, and communities.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't think you wouldn't be happy. I just wanted to ask if it was a possibility. Thank you.
Yeah. No, it's a term of phrase. Mr. Clerk, could you please put that docket, docket number 0268, in strong women, families, and communities?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy on docket, oh, Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 0269?
Docket number 0269, Counsel Murphy offer the following: Order for a hearing to discuss residential property values and the assessing process.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'd like to start just clerical. I'd like to add Counsel Fitzgerald as an original co-sponsor.
Counsel Fitzgerald is so added. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
I'd like to suspend Route 12 and add Counsel Weber.
Counsel Murphy sees suspend the rules, add Counsel Weber as a third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections. Counsel Weber is so added. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
And then I'd also like to thank Counsel Fitzgerald, who reached out to me on Monday after a conversation with the clerk, because Counsel Fitzgerald and Weber had filed a similar hearing order. Mine was first, so we, I talked about just adding them on to the one I already filed. So thank you for joining me, and three of us will work on this. I also want to thank Counsel Weber's office, who brought to our attention, after you were at a community meeting, that there is a looming deadline date. So thank you to Counsel Worrell's office for already getting this scheduled on the calendar so that we can have this hearing and hopefully get it voted on so that it can move forward in a timely manner. With that all being said, the City of Boston is at a critical juncture where affordability, revenue generation, and equitable investment intersect with the future of residential and commercial property landscapes. This hearing order aims to shed light on the complexity surrounding the assessing process and its direct impact on residential tax bills. I can only speak for myself. Been getting lots of calls since this conversation started last year, but especially after tax bills hit two weeks ago to residents, questioning the differences. So I'm hoping from this hearing that we get some answers on assessment variability. Why do property values differ significantly between nearby parcels? What causes considerable fluctuations in property values within short timeframes? What specific criteria and methods are used to establish a property's value? And are there alternative methods that could provide more accurate or equitable assessments? I'm looking for transparency and relief options. The city offers exemptions, abatements, and we're having hearings on that, potentially rebates. Yet the criteria, application process, available relief, and timing need to be clearer. Unfortunately, one thing I found out with many seniors is that they don't even know that they're able to apply, or they need more support applying for some of these exemptions that they would qualify for. So ensuring that residents understand and can access these resources is crucial. And also, I think we need an in-depth exploration of the assessing process, a comprehensive review of the factors contributing to property valuations, including home improvements, sales of nearby properties, and other market dynamics, analyzing existing valuation methods to identify their benefits or limitations, and exploring creative, comprehensive solutions to the process. So looking forward to this hearing. Thank you to Counsel Fitzgerald and Weber for joining me, and I hope all our colleagues will be at the hearing to ask important questions and that the administration sends the people we need to get the answers for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy, and thank you to my colleagues for working collaboratively to solve the Rule 15 issue as flagged by the clerk. Really appreciate it. It's a model for how we should work collaboratively together. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fitzgerald. Counsel Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Certainly a lot of attention over the past several months about the taxes, and so constituents were rightly more tuned in to their bills as they hit over the past two weeks, and of course, has generated a lot of calls to us. A lot of focus was given to the tax rate, right? I mean, your taxes are made up of two variables, the tax rate and what your home is valued at. And while a lot of the press and concern has been about the tax rate, I think not enough people have focused on the assessed value of their home and how that value is actually assessed. We've had many calls come in where some constituents had seen their homes increase $700,000 over one year without having done work, no siding, no new kitchen, nothing like that, things that typically would increase the value of one's home. And so we've also had a lot of calls come in where a similar house on the same street in the same neighborhood were valued very differently or had a different increase or decrease in the tens of thousands of dollars. And obviously, when those increase, so do your taxes. And so people, it's starting to sort of pit neighbor against neighbor, really, where folks are looking at what everyone else did on the street and seeing how they fare. And a lot of discrepancies have come up in those conversations. And so we've got, that's what brought on the calls. And we don't really have And so that's what brought on the calls, and we don't really have a good answer. I don't have a good answer when folks call and say, why did mine go up $700,000 and next door similarly only went up $10,000, and thus affecting the taxes that we have to pay. And so I think it would be a great idea for folks to understand that other variable in the equation, the assessment of homes, how that occurs, and not to mention, this year was one of those set five-year reevaluations that the city does, that I think both we and the administration have done a poor job in sort of explaining where we look at a past five-year aggregate, and that data set then sort of determines trends in the value of one's home then, which was applied this year and could be a reason for some folks' spike in their taxes. And I think the constituents have a right to understand that, know that, and ask questions, and that's what I hope this hearing does. And I thank you, Council Murphy, for adding me as well, and Council Weber for joining us.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Weber. You have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. Just to reiterate what Councilors Murphy and Fitzgerald have said, my office has also received calls from residents who are concerned about increases in their property tax bills. And we've heard particularly from seniors who had questions about the increases in value of their property. And I think it's important that we have a hearing, be able to understand the process, what data goes in and what they do with it. Also, help us advocate for our constituents in terms of what they can do about assessments, what resources are available to seniors to lower their taxes, and what we can do as a council to make sure that process is fair and transparent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Council here. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have a quick question, and just so that I understand. You mentioned earlier that certain things get put in certain committees, particularly with mine, because it's post, right? So that these are things that have already happened, right? So in the interest of just the exercise here, and just so that my own education, moving forward, anything that deals with any budgetary or any issues that have happened after we've approved things, then technically, those are things that could potentially be considered in my committee, just so that I understand. Not to say that I'm gonna... Not this particular situation, but you just made me think of something, and then I'm just curious now.
Yeah, I'm not gonna make a blanket statement, so.
But I need to know. It would be helpful at some point to better understand the dynamics, because I've been the chair of this particular committee now, under your leadership, for a year, and there have been a number of things that technically, under the explanation that you provided earlier, that potentially would go under my committee. But I just want to understand, considering that we're talking about assessments, we're talking about things that the city has already valued and assessed, technically, if this is an issue of something that has already happened, this potentially could go into my committee, because it's already happened. If that is the explanation you tried to give me earlier, then I want to question this particular hearing order and the committee in which you plan to put it in, just so that I understand for future.
Yeah, so I'm happy to talk to you about it. I'm not going to make a blanket statement. This is directly within the purview of Ways and Means. That isn't to say that there is an overlap between the work of certain committees, but this one, to me, falls squarely within the work of the Ways and Means Committee. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, would you please add Councilors Coletta Zapata, Flynn? Please add the chair. This docket, docket number 0269... Oh, and Council Santana, and Council Worrell, and Council Mejia. This docket will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0270?
Docket number 0270, Council Coletta Zapata offered the following. Order to adopt the Good Landlord Tax Abatement as a local option in the City of Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Coletta Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to add Council Worrell as second cosponsor, and suspend Rule 12 and add Council Santana as third.
Council Worrell is so added. Councilor Coletta Zapata suspends the rules, add Council Santana as a third original cosponsor, seeing and hearing no objections. Council Santana is so added. Council Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you. Today, I am proud to introduce, in order to adopt the Good Landlord Tax Abatement as a local option here in the City of Boston, I want to give a shout out to my predecessor, Senator Lydia Edwards, as well as State Representative Andy Vargas, who helped sponsor this and get it a part of the tax package that was passed late 2023. This policy aligns with our city's ongoing efforts to tackle the housing crisis, a crisis that continues to displace our neighbors, force families out of their communities, and leave countless residents on the brink of homelessness. Boston's housing challenges are well documented. As of January 2025, the average rent in our city has soared to $3,393 per month, more than double the national average. While rental unit availability has improved slightly since the pandemic, it remains limited. And the cost of maintaining properties worsened by increased property taxes has left many landlords with no reason to raise rents, no choice but to raise rents, often at the expense of affordability. This is where the Good Landlord Tax Abatement comes in, a tool created under, again, the state's 2023 tax package, which can ultimately make a difference. By opting into this statute, Boston will offer a property tax exemption for landlords who provide year-round rental units at affordable rates to households earning 80% of the area median income or less. Eligible landlords will cap rents at 30% of a tenant's income, ensuring truly affordable housing that meets federal HUD standards. This initiative has three clear benefits. It rewards good landlords already renting below market rents, offering them financial relief to offset rising costs. And many of us, or some of us, may have anecdotal instances where you have somebody who has lived in the city their entire life, they own the property, and they're keeping their rents low so that people could stay there. I have somebody, I'm not going to name her, but she had said that she's renting out her three-bedroom for about $1,000 per month. And I think in this moment, what she's doing deserves some sort of reward, because she's housing this family who would otherwise be displaced, because they could not afford anything more than that. It also incentivizes more landlords to offer affordable units, expanding housing opportunities for low and moderate-income families, but more importantly, it prioritizes housing stability for our residents, addressing an issue that cuts to the core of economic and racial equity here in Boston. By adopting this local option, Boston will lead the way in creating a housing market that works for everyone, not just for those who can afford the highest rents. Let's work together to bring this thoughtful and innovative policy to life, providing both immediate relief and long-term opportunities for Boston residents and property owners alike. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Worrell. Council Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and Council Coletta Zapata, for adding me as a original cosponsor. I'm excited about the potential of adopting the Good Landlord Tax Abatement as a local option. I know of a few landlords that offer rent for a two-bedroom at $1,200 with utilities included. And I believe programs like this can help centralize and stabilize affordable rents across the city of Boston by incentivizing small landlords who are already offering below-market rents. This not only keeps rents manageable, but reduces the financial pressures, preventing small landlords from needing to raise rents to cover rising costs. Notably, small landlords who own 68% of Boston's residential rental properties are less likely to evict tenants compared to larger property owners, contributing to Boston's housing stability. By offering abatements, we're lighting the burden on those providing affordable housing and expanding housing options for families who need it most. Similar programs in other cities have shown that when small property owners are supported, the availability of stable, affordable housing grows. Looking forward to the conversation, and thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Santana. Council Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you so much, Councilor Coletta Zapata, for adding me. You know, as a third cosponsor, I don't want to reiterate many of the things, so I'm just going to highlight, you know, this really helps keep our communities together. I think that's very important, especially in a city where we care so much about our neighborhoods and its people. It makes it easier for landlords to keep more affordable rents, especially when you're talking about the majority of our city being renters. I think that really ensures that savings go straight to renters. And I think we need to be able to adopt this. So I really appreciate the leadership of Councilor Coletta Zapata on this, thinking about our most vulnerable residents and how to alleviate some of that pressure that they're receiving. So really, thank you, and I look forward to this hearing. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Durkin, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Weber, please add the chair. This docket, docket number 0270, will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0271?
Docket number 0271, Council Flynn offered the following. Resolution in support of the replacement of concurrent traffic signals in the City of Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I mentioned earlier, pedestrian safety is one of the biggest issues we face in the City of Boston, and a critical component of public safety and overall quality of life. In 2019, two pedestrians were struck by a van at the intersection of Melcher and Summer Street in the Fort Point neighborhood at the site of a concurrent pedestrian phasing traffic signal, and one of them passed away due to her injuries. After this tragic accident, I called for and held a City Council hearing on concurrent phasing pedestrian traffic signals, as I continue to believe it is a recipe for disaster to have cars and pedestrians, both have a right-turn green arrow and pedestrian-walk sign at the same time, with the expectation that the vehicle will yield to the pedestrian in the crosswalk. That doesn't happen. Let me be more clear. At the corner of Melcher Street and Summer Street, the pedestrian has the light that says they can cross. They're walking across the street, but when you're driving down Summer Street, the vehicle coming down Summer Street will also take the right turn legally. It's unhealthy, it's unsafe, and it's one of the reasons we have seen so many vehicle accidents in Boston. It's critical that we review the practice of concurrent pedestrian phasing traffic signals at the intersections throughout the city, make the necessary changes to focus on improving pedestrian safety in Boston. As our city becomes more developed and densely populated, the increase in vehicle and pedestrian safety means that many areas of our streetscape need improvement and change to ensure safety for all. I ask my colleagues to support this important resolution today to replace this unsafe concurrent phasing pedestrian traffic signal in the City of Boston to improve pedestrian safety. I ask you not to block it. If you want to vote against it, please vote against it. But I need to do my due diligence to bring this forward to the residents of Boston, to let them know how unsafe this practice is. I can't allow one more day to go by without doing our due diligence to provide the safest city possible. Some people might say I'm wrong on this, but I know traffic signals probably better than anyone in this building, and it's unsafe to have this type of scenario taking place in the City of Boston. Vote against this if you believe I'm wrong, but give the opportunity for the residents of Boston to be safe. Let the vote go forward.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Weber. You have the floor.
Thank you very much. This fall, Glenn Ingram, who was a resident of Jamaica Plain, was killed in front of the Forest Hill Station, crossing in a crosswalk that was concurrently with a green light for an MBTA bus. You know, we held a vigil, and in response to that, there have been safety improvements around Forest Hills, but seeing the harm that this practice can have, I support the resolution. I'll be voting for it today, but so I'm just laying that out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes, I think, Council Durkin, Council Santana, Council Fitzgerald. The Chair recognizes Council Durkin. One moment, sorry. The Chair recognizes Council Durkin.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I just wanted to ask through the Chair, what was the start of this thinking for you? And I just want to get an idea of how I should approach this issue, and I do appreciate anything to do with traffic safety. I just, and really, it's just my lack of knowledge of this, is asking sort of what moved him to move on this issue.
Through the Chair, Council Flynn, if you'd like to respond, you may.
Thank you to Council Durkin. It's a very good question. It's an issue I've worked on for since 2017, 2018, and I've written about this, I've held a hearing on this, but the real, one of the main reasons is when a young woman was killed directly or because of this type of scenario, and I vowed that I would do everything I possibly can to educate residents, to educate city officials of how unsafe this practice is. Again, some people might disagree with me, and I respect that, but I want to do everything I possibly can as a City Councilor to provide the safest streets and sidewalks for all of our residents. I'm afraid, Madam Chair, that if we don't implement this in the City of Boston, that there will be other people killed crossing the street under the same scenario as the concurrent jurisdiction of a vehicle and a pedestrian. I think it's only a matter of time, in my opinion, but what we can do if we speak with one voice and let the City of Boston know that, as district councilors, as at-large city councilors, we're in these neighborhoods too, every day and every night, and residents are asking us, we want safer communities, we want safer streets, and this is one way to provide it. Yes, the vehicle might have to wait an extra 15, 20 seconds, or 30 seconds, but I'm willing to take that risk. I'm willing to inconvenience the vehicle if it means improving the safety of those crossing the street. And when those that are crossing the street, those are our elderly neighbors, those are persons with disabilities. I was talking about my parents earlier in the crosswalk. I see, down in the Fort Plain area too, I see young families crossing in the crosswalk, going to school, taking their kids to school. You all see it too, and the cars will zip by them, taking a right turn when they're trying to cross the crosswalk. Thank you, Council Durkin, for that question.
Thank you. Council Durkin, if you'd like to respond, you may.
Thank you so much. Through the Chair, I just wanted to thank Council Flynn. I would just like to offer, I will be voting yes. Thank you for your passionate advocacy for this. Obviously, I think I need to learn more as the Chair of Planning, Development, and Transportation. So through the Chair, would just like to suggest that we do either a working session or a policy briefing on this particular topic in my committee, and that we can all learn more about the advocacy that's taking place here. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Council Durkin. The Chair recognizes, I believe the order was, was it Council Santana? Council Santana, Council Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I rise, I want to thank Council Flynn for your leadership on this, and as Chair of Public Safety and Criminal Justice here on the Boston City Council, I plan to vote in support of this resolution. I know that you talked about some of the incidents in your district, Councilor. I know Council Weber just mentioned Glenn Ingram and his district. This is a city-wide issue, and that's why I'm proud to support this. You know, I think it shouldn't be necessary to keep having some of these incidents in order for us to, particularly when someone is dying, right, and in order for us to fix this policy failure. So I think we need to be more proactive. I think this is a time to act with a sense of urgency in order to really protect our residents. So really want to thank Council Flynn, and I plan to vote in support of this resolution today. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Coletta Zapata. You have the floor. Oh, who was it? It was Council Fitzgerald? Okay. Council Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I am in support of this resolution. I thank Council Flynn for being so passionate about it. There's plenty of instances from downtown to our neighborhoods. If you look at state and Congress, or even back in Dorchester, we have had Naponton and Galvin Boulevard, the same concurrent lights. And so we're happy to thank, I'm glad to get out ahead of that before someone is hurt. I think we're on the right path here as a body. I'd also like to say, in this specific resolution, Council Flynn calls out the traffic signal at Dorchester Avenue and Dorchester Street, both named after Dorchester, and I'll be damned if I have an intersection besmirched, my neighborhood's good name, and so I'd like to get this one fixed as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Mejia. Council Mejia? I'm sorry, I just, I think this is the order, so I'm going to just go with Council Mejia. Okay. Since you gave it up, I was like, yeah, Council Mejia. Counsel Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank Counsel Flynn. I'm always curious as to when you start saying, I know people don't support, I always, I'm like, how do y'all know who supports and who doesn't? Because I walked in here thinking everything, I don't, you didn't even talk to me about it, but anyways. But I'm glad to hear that your suspicion of people not supporting it is contrary to what you believe, because it seems like all of your colleagues are in support of this, so just wanted to just name that. But I also wanted to just say that last night I was at a civic association meeting in West Roxbury with Counsel Weber, who actually uplifted your leadership in this particular space and talked about your work. So I just wanted to, I don't know if I violated the rules by naming somebody, sorry, but I just wanted to note that, you know, you may not be in all spaces and places, and, you know, you may not know that your colleagues, contrary to what we all may believe here, that, that your leadership extended to West Roxbury in terms of your advocacy around pedestrian safety, and Counsel Weber was quick to name your work in the space in the hearing order that you were going to be introducing today. So I just wanted to rise and acknowledge you for giving him his kudos, because we don't see that often.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, and thank you, Counsel Flynn. I did just want to rise to say, my fourth year here on the council, that anytime we've had a transportation hearing, and you've always brought this up, and you've talked about the need to change that, and it has fallen on deaf ears, and it's never been changed. So I do think, and I'm happy to hear, that we, hopefully, when we vote, have a unanimous vote in support of this, to send a message to the Transportation Department, and just wanted to make sure everyone out there knows that's not the first time Counsel Flynn has talked about this specific transportation concern, and things have not changed yet. So we need to work together to make sure that we will change it. And thank you, Counsel Durkin, for wanting, you know, to have some sort of hearing after this to talk more about it, and I think that will help us advocate to make sure that this gets passed, because a resolution, as we know, sometimes is not even worth the paper it's printed on, but if we advocate after we leave the chambers today and make sure that we work together to get this done, then our residents will be safer. So thank you, Counsel Flynn.
The chair recognizes Counsel Coletta Zapata. You have the floor.
Thanks, Madam President, and thank you, Counsel Flynn, for bringing this up. I don't drive, I don't bike, I walk everywhere, and so I am a huge advocate for pedestrian safety, so thank you again for your leadership. I will just say, though, that I support this, obviously. The senior traffic engineer in the city of Boston that works on this is a North End resident, and I know that he is very much open to this idea. He's actually helped me in the past with Keene Square in the North End, so I'm not sure where the resistance is on this, but working collaboratively with the great city workers in this, in this city is also important. I don't know what conversations have already taken place, but I think that, that working with folks who are on the ground doing this every single day is important. So I look forward to bringing that person, and I'm not going to name him, because I didn't get permission, but I know he works very hard, and I appreciate the work that he does as well. So, thank you.
The chair recognizes Counsel Orell. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and just want to just rise and just say thank you to Counsel Flynn for continuously advocating for pedestrian safety. And as a district counselor, anytime, you know, any of these issues get brought up, it always feels good to get the support of your colleagues to make sure that you're solving something for a resident and increasing the quality of life in the neighborhood. So thank you for your advocacy, and as a district city counselor, I understand how hard it's sometimes you have to push to get things done. So thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Okay. I'll be brief. Thank you, Counsel Flynn, for elevating this issue. Everyone who dies, any, every pedestrian who dies, that's a preventable death. That's a death that can just be prevented, and so we should be working to make this happen. May the memory of those who passed away this year in Jamaica Plain and in South Boston, may we do this on their behalf. So, thank you. Mr. Clerk, Counsel Flynn seeks a suspension adoption. Oh, would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Flynn, oh, Fitzgerald, Mejia, Murphy, Santana, Weber, Worrell, please add the chair. Counsel Flynn seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number 0271. Mr. Clerk, will you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 0271. Counsel Abraiden. Counsel Coletta Zapata.
Yes.
Counsel Coletta Zapata, yes. Counsel Durkin.
Yes.
Counsel Durkin, yes. Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Counsel Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counsel Fitzgerald, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Ugen.
Yes.
Counsel Ugen, yes. Counsel Mejia. Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Pepe. Counsel Santana.
Yes.
Counsel Santana, yes. Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Weber, yes, and Counsel Orell.
Yes.
Counsel Orell, yes. Docket number 0271 has received 10 votes and the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket number 0271 has been adopted. Before we move on to green sheets, if anybody would like to add their name or for anything under motions, orders, and resolutions, Mr. Clerk, I know that we wanted to add Counsel, that Counsel Durkin sought to suspend the rules to add Counsel Coletta Zapata as the third original co-sponsor on docket number 0262. Just want to make sure I have that number correctly. So can Counselor Coletta Zapata be added on that docket as third? Okay. Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Orell. Counsel Orell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Before we proceed, I'd like to formally object to docket number 0282, which is currently in the consent agenda, and request that it be placed before the full council for consideration.
Okay. Thank you. That docket on the consent agenda has been objected to and is now on motions, orders, and resolutions. Okay, okay. That docket on the consent agenda is transferred to motions, orders, and resolutions. What's the docket number? Can you repeat the docket number?
0282.
0282. Okay. Thank you. That is transferred to motions, orders, and resolutions. Counsel Orell, you have the floor.
Yes, read it.
Oh, Counsel, Mr. Clerk, would you please read it into the record?
Docket number 0282. Counselors Orell and Santana offer the following: Resolution recognizing January 20th as the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day in the city of Boston.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Orell. Counsel Orell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. These words from Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King resonates deeply with us here in Boston, a city that continues to strive for equity and justice. Reverend Dr. King's unwavering commitment to nonviolent activism led to monumental achievements, such as the Civil Rights Acts of 1964 and the Voting Rights Act of 1965, transforming American society and expanding civil liberties for millions. Boston holds a special place in Dr. King's legacy. It was here that he earned his PhD from Boston University and met his wife, Coretta Scott King. The Embrace statue at Boston Common stands as a testament to his enduring impact in our city's connection to his mission. Yet, the challenges Reverend Dr. King confronted still persist today. Recent reports highlight disparities in Boston, underscoring the need for continued action. That's why I believe we need initiatives like RISE that focus on eliminated inequities in our city by using data to identify the areas where reporting and accountability are needed the most. As we recognize January 20th, 2025, as Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day in Boston, let us honor his legacy by recommitting to the fight for justice and equity. And I'd like to suspend the rules and request passage of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Santana. Counsel Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Counsel Orell, for including me in this resolution. Again, I don't want to repeat any of the stuff that you just said in the history, but, you know, this is a very important day for me, and I think for many people here in the city of Boston. I think as we're approaching, you know, MLK Day and MLK Weekend, I think I just really want to remind my colleagues as we're, you know, posting on social media to just also, you know, to think deeper about some of the policies that we can be pushing, some of the things, you know, acts of kindness that we can be doing that week, and that weekend, that day is filled with intentional service. So I think, I think many of us do that, and we just want to be, make sure that we're intentional about that this year. So really want to thank Counsel Orell for your leadership on this, and, you know, also I do want to mention, I think also, as we're, I know a lot of people also like to quote many different quotes from Dr. Martin Luther King, and I think, you know, I think being intentional also about reading the full quotes and trying to not misrepresent some of the, some of the phrases and words that are being used, I think is also important. But, you know, really want to thank again Counsel Orell, and I look forward to supporting this resolution. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Thank you, Counsel Orell, and Santana, for bringing this resolution forward. There are so many struggles in identifying, in making, you know, someone's birthday who hadn't meant so much a holiday, and it didn't, it doesn't come easy. This past Sunday, I was at the 12th Baptist Church for their annual invocation of Dr. King, because that was Dr. King's church, and just the sanitized message that we often get about Dr. King, when he was killed fighting for, assassinated fighting for economic justice, for sanitation workers, black sanitation workers down in Memphis, Tennessee, and the fight for racial justice is inextricable with the fight for economic justice, for voting rights. And so I just want to endorse that message that we don't sanitize Dr. King and what he was fighting for, and that we do what, do what Dr. King often talked about and often demonstrated, who died at the young age of 39, of choosing courage over fear, especially in this year. So, thank you. Counselors Orell and Santana seek, would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, could you please add Counselors Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Weber, please add the chair. Docket number, Counselors Orell and Santana seek suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number, is it 0282?
Yes.
0282. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has been adopted. Oh, Mr. Clerk, will you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 0282. Counsel Abraiden. Counsel Coletta Zapata.
Yes.
Counsel Coletta Zapata, yes. Counsel Durkin.
Yes.
Counsel Durkin, yes. Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Counsel Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counsel Fitzgerald, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Ugen.
Yes.
Counsel Ugen, yes. Counsel Mejia. Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Pepe. Counsel Santana.
Yes.
Counsel Santana, yes. Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Weber, yes, and Counsel Orell.
Yes.
Counsel Orell, yes. Docket number 0282 has received 10 votes and the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket number 0282 has passed. Anyone else like to add their name to a docket under 02, under motions, orders, and resolutions? Okay, we are now moving on to green sheets. I know that there, we have three polls that I know of from green sheets. The chair recognizes Counsel Coletta Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to call docket 0143 from the green sheets, please.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, do you have that? Docket number 0143? Okay, can you please read it into the record?
From the Committee on Government Operations, docket number 0143, petition for a special law, an act relative to senior homeowner property tax exemption.
Thank you.
Absent objection. The docket is properly before the body and for discussion. The chair recognizes Counsel Coletta Zapata.
Thank you. I'd also like to motion to substitute a new copy.
Second.
That motion has been seconded. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Counsel Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a home rule petition allowing for a senior tax abatement. The only substitution is in the hereby ordered, so that it allows the state to amend this home rule petition, which means that they can, the State House, our colleagues up there can amend it. So I'll pass it to the lead sponsor for any remarks that he wants to say on this docket. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Orell. Counsel Orell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel Coletta Zapata, for pulling this out of green sheets. This is the home rule petition that I introduced last week on providing property tax relief for seniors. This petition raises the exemption amount and increases the income and asset thresholds so that many more seniors can qualify for release. Many of our seniors have paid off their mortgage but lived on fixed incomes and are struggling to keep up with the rise in property taxes, and a few of our hearing orders have spoken to that today. The substitution doesn't change anything from this home rule petition that passed this body in 2022, which I believe a few of us voted on here in chambers. It simply allows this to be amended at the State House rather than adopted with precise language. And again, this makes it more for seniors to be eligible, more seniors to be eligible for the, for the senior tax credit, and it triples the amount of the credit. You know, we hear from so many people about the rising property taxes, and I think it's incumbent on us to get something passed as soon as possible to get that relief to our seniors. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes, is this, okay, the chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to be clear, Counsel Orell, isn't this the hearing order that I'm an original co-sponsor on with you from last week? When did you make this decision to pull it from the green sheets? Are you asking for a vote or just asking for a substitution so when the hearing happens, we have the new language?
Through the chair, Counsel Orell, if you would like to respond, you may.
We are, we are moving for a vote, just to make sure that we get it in on time with the State House.
So through the chair, yep.
Let Counsel Orell finish speaking, and then our turn. Counsel Orell, you have the floor.
So on January 17th, state representatives will be introducing all the pieces of legislation in order to get it part of that big file of legislation that are being introduced by all state representatives and get a hearing date. We want to make sure that we put the senior tax credit or tax exemption up there to have in hearing, to make sure that we get this a hearing and then also pass as soon as possible to provide relief for our seniors.
Yeah, so my first question, that's why I interrupted, was is this the same one, that I'm an original co-sponsor? So is there a reason why when you speak about "we," I wasn't included in that conversation? And that I'm just hearing about it now at the end of the council meeting?
Counsel Orell, if you would like to respond to the chair, you may. Counsel Orell, you have the floor.
And I understand.
Wait, Counsel Orell, Counsel Orell has the floor, and then, okay.
And as, as the original co-sponsor, you know, in order to, you know, move urgently, we decided to bring it up for a vote today.
Thank you. Through the chair, Counsel Murphy, if you would like to respond, you may.
I'd like to make another statement. Just to be clear, I had filed a hearing order, a home rule petition, last week that was very similar to the one with the senior carbo, but mine included the seniors and more. So Counsel Orell and I did speak about not Rule 15 in his and making sure that we had both hearings, but I joined on to his, he joined on to mine, and my understanding is that we were going to work together to move this forward. So I do understand the urgency, but hoping that my hearing order also, which was including the conversation and the importance for our seniors. At the end of this meeting, I'll be wishing my dad, Papa Jack, his 91st birthday, you know, my Auntie Peggy will be turning 85 soon. Understand 100%. I've been very fortunate in my family to be surrounded by strong seniors. We have long genes in our family, which then comes with aging parents and all of the things we know in this council. It's important to make sure that our role here on the council, we're supporting our seniors any way we can. So I do just want to make sure that I go on the record to say that I feel that if we're going to have original sponsors, that we talk about it before we pull hearings from the green sheets to go for a vote, because I do think, and thank you always for speaking up about people's voices. No, I know you're not afraid to do it, and I appreciate it, though, because it is important that everyone's voice is heard, and it's not just to politically be attached to something. It's if we're working together on things, we have to work together on things. So I'm hoping that going forward, we will do that, and I'm hoping that mine, because maybe I would have pulled mine, and if we're going to have the same support, we would have put mine right up there, you know, the one that I originally filed. And there can be many conversations, but a hearing would have had it. So hoping that that doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Mejia. Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
I feel like I'm in divorce court and I got to pick my parents. It's so terrible. Ugh, Jesus Lord, we need to sage this hall. I, I just think this is just, it's, it's 2025, and I'm really hoping that we can find another way. I'm trying really hard, y'all. I'm really trying hard to like show up here. Ellen, you have seen it. You know how difficult it is. But, like, we need to do better as colleagues. Like, no one likes surprises. I've seen them happen even today. I got a call this morning out of courtesy about a hearing order that you and I were cosponsoring, and I found out at the last minute that we were going to be bringing it up for a vote. I know, and I am glad that I am not part of the cool kids club. I don't want to be. I actually like the way I roll. I'm independent. I don't owe anybody anything here. But, out of professional courtesy, I think it's important for us to start demonstrating a little bit more of a different way of dynamics, because we should not be hearing about votes that are being taken out, and it came out of the chair of government office, so I'm going to assume there was a conversation that had happened outside of the original cosponsors. So, I just think like out of fairness, I think that we need to start learning how to be more cur, you know, courtesy to each other. And I'm not here to defend Counselor Murphy, because you can fight your own battles, okay? I'm here to fight my own. I got enough battles to fight up in here, so I don't need everybody else's drama and trauma to carry along with me. But, I will say that we need to start, we need, and I don't know where the leadership comes from, and I don't know who is responsible for the way we govern here and how we show up for each other as colleagues, but whatever it is, I think that I'm going to recommend that we have some sort of, like, a meeting with the counselors to, so that we can all talk about group dynamics, courtesy, because otherwise, if we don't get ahead of this, we have a whole year. This is an election year. This is when everybody really shows their face here, just so you know. If you haven't, this is where everybody really shows up. And so, because I've been here, I don't want to say I'm the, you've been here longer than me. Lord, we cannot continue to keep doing business like this. Let's like figure this out. There needs to be some sort of standard put in place. If something's, a green sheet is going to be pulled, there's going to be a vote that's going to be taken, then we should know about those things prior to the start of the meeting, so that everybody can be well informed. Because what happens in this council, particularly in this iteration of this particular body, is that everything comes through here and everything gets rammed down our throats, and we all have to make decisions while everybody else has already had their deliberations and have had their conversations and have had their little negotiations, and everybody has done all their little behind the scenes willing and dealing, and then the folks who are not part of the cool kids club, we find out about it publicly. That's just not the way for us to work, and if people don't trust us, they're not going to continue to, they're going to continue to question what are our intentions here. So, I'm not blocking it. I'm just talking about the process. I really care less what it is that you're talking about right now. I don't care about that. I care about the process. I care about how we show up. I care about how we demonstrate, everybody says collaborative leadership, but y'all are out here literally taking each other out. And it's evident by the way y'all are moving. So, let's stop. Like, it's just, just stop. We're all adults here. Like, we need to just stop. And yeah, yeah, you can get sick of me all you want, but I'm going to keep showing up because that's my job. So, if you're getting sick of me, take a Tylenol, but I'm going to still keep talking.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor, I think it was Counselor Weber. Counselor Weber, you have the floor.
Sure, yeah. I, I had a question for the filer. I mean, you know, I, I think this is a, is a good idea and, and the policy is good and solid. I just, for clarity's sake, I did think the mayor had included something like this in, in her tax proposal, and I just wondered to the extent the filer knows at the state level, what impact two filings on the same subject, would it, would it get in the way of the mayor's proposal? I'm just, that's my question. Thank you.
Through the chair, Counselor Worrell, if you would like to respond, you may.
As mentioned, we're trying to get up, get it up there as soon as possible to be passed, not knowing when the mayor's proposal will pass and what from the mayor's proposal will be attached in a home rule petition. But, I do believe that having a senior tax exemption by itself, it would be, it could get through both House and the Senate.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for recognizing me. This is unrelated to this docket and unrelated to any, any docket, but I'd, I'd like to make a recommendation, and it's been recommended previously in the past, not, not from me but from other counselors. But, your policy, Madam Chair, is when someone wants to bring something before, bring something out from a green sheet, that they would notify you prior to, to today. But, for the, for the rest of the body, this is, this is the first time we would find out about a particular docket. So, we don't, we don't even have really access to look at the docket, to study the docket, and to make a split decision on whether or not we support something or not. So, my, my request would be if someone is planning to take something out of the green sheet, and your policy is to go through the, go through the council president first to give the council president a heads up first, but could that also be added to the official agenda, so city counselors can also be prepared? And so, we can study the docket, we can ask questions, we can be prepared, we can do our research instead of making a split second decision on a particular matter. That's very important, and I'm going to support the proposal, but I, I'll be honest with you, I haven't, I haven't read it since it was just, just announced a few minutes ago. And this is unrelated to this docket. This happens frequently, and it happened when I was the city council president too, and I should have had a policy in place where if someone brought something before the council and on a green sheet, that it should be in the agenda. I feel to do that. I'll, I'll acknowledge that. But, it's no criticism of anybody here, but maybe in the interest of transparency and the public as well, maybe the public would like to know what we're going to vote on as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and thank you for acknowledging that this was the practice during your presidency. It's also the only other term that I've had. This is my second term, the only other term where I've seen how things go, and in that process, green sheets were just, and, and no one ever made an issue of it. Things were pulled from the green sheets, and there was never any advance notice. Now, I have recommended that should there be a green sheets poll to let our office know, honestly, for, for the, for the sake of the clerk, because it helps, it helps to know what's being pulled so that he's not rattling and finding dockets. And so, I do ask folks as, and sometimes we don't know the day before, the day, until the day of the meeting. Sometimes there are green sheet polls that happen without me even knowing, and so I'm not going to tread on a committee chair's toes. I do ask that as soon as people know that they're going to pull them in the green sheets that they share. The chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you.
Oh, I, I believe that was the, okay, I'm not, I apologize. Counselor Durkin has spoken on the matter, but Counselor Murphy, your light is on. You can speak, and then I'll go to Counselor Durkin.
Thank you. So, thank you, co, you said...
Yes, you can, yes.
Yeah, I want to go, yes. Thank you. So, and I've talked to chairs about this also, that when the chair and the president is the chair of Wednesday meeting, if they call on someone, we're all going to get a chance. Well, I don't think I'm being rude. Do you feel offended because she... No. I'd already be 30 seconds, I'd probably already be done. But, I do just want to kind of reiterate what Counselor Flynn said, so thank you for listening when I speak, Counselor Flynn, because twice I have stood up and I have asked, and I appreciate the procedure that you put in place this year to make sure that Michelle and the clerk are aware beforehand, but that we on the council, and I have shouted out, Ellie, you've always done a wonderful job from Counselor Coletta Zapata's office for sending emails and giving people a heads up. I've spoken directly about that so that we can be prepared. So, just another example, I wanted to make sure I'm asking you now for a third time, can we make it a procedure that if we know we're going to be asking the central staff to be aware or the clerk to be aware that there's a green sheet being pulled, that we're not, I mean, Meghan had just walked around, I mean, the public might not know this, but we were getting a copy of this as Counselor Zapata was standing up to speak on it. That's why I said, is this even the one we just filed together last week? Because I was completely unaware that it was going to be pulled. So, I'm hoping that going forward, that it's not just a courtesy, that it could be a policy that we do. So, that, also like Counselor Flynn said, we need to be prepared when these important things are asked to be voted on. So, hoping that happens in the future.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I want to say a couple of things. I appreciate all of the leadership of every single one of my colleagues. I think one thing that happens a lot of times is we have difference of opinions on different subjects, and that creates a lot of tenseness between us. But, I really do see our role with every single thing that's presented here is to evaluate the merits of that individual proposal, whether it is given to me at game time, whether I, whether I had, whether it was filed earlier and I didn't have a chance to read it. I know, you know, early in my time, I had to move really fast on a couple of issues, and a couple of times I felt like I actually made the wrong call. So, I understand feeling off guard, and I think, I appreciate Counselor Mejia's stance on just feeling like, you know, we, we all do choose how we show up here, and I hope that you all see in the new year, I'm also taking like a different tact, because it is really important that every single one of our constituents see us all working together, and I, on the issues that we can share, we share. On the issues where we have a difference of opinion, we were all elected to have those opinions. So, I'll just say on this particular issue, I have like advocated for every opportunity to, to give, to, to really relieve residents, and if that's seniors or young homeowners, like I, I think of those categories as the same. We have people in our city who cannot afford their tax bills, and so I plan to vote in support of this today. I do have the same questions as Counselor Weber, just in regards to like, how does it all work? But, I think it's important today that we send a message to the State House that we are looking for, we are looking for the opportunity to relieve our residents. So, I'm going to vote yes, but I just want to say like, we've all been caught off guard, and I empathize with everyone who speaks on issues and cares about them and takes on those issues of their own and can feel left out when there can only be three sponsors. But, I think with our vote, we can say what we think, and so I just want to thank everyone for their positions, and I'm going to vote yes. I think I'm okay with a vote today, but I appreciate everyone trying to bring this body into a positive space, because we all really deserve to have that space, and residents deserve us to, for this to be a positive space.
Thank you. Counselor Durkin, the chair recognizes Counselor Weber. Counselor Weber, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. So, so my concern here is that, you know, we need, I'm in favor of the mayor's tax proposals. You know, I'm very disappointed that the state senate blocked this proposal, you know, our proposal to raise the, you know, temporarily property taxes on commercial properties. And so, you know, I know it's part of this group of things. My concern is that by passing this by itself, we will allow the State House to pick and choose and sort of, we'll pass this one individually and leave everything else, which will, this will help some seniors and it's, again, I completely, I think this is, this is a great idea and well executed, but just where we're, we're sending them a group of proposals that will not just, will allow us to, to shift the burden or collect, or give rebates that by giving them this option of like, well, we're, you can take this one piece and pass it, we're sort of defeating everything else. That's just, that's my concern. I just, so I, I'm, if, if the filer has anything to say about that, maybe I'm just being paranoid and I will accept that possibility. Thank you.
Thanks. The chair, if you'd like to respond, Counselor Worrell, you may.
Yeah, through the chair to the counselor. We, we have passed this before as a body in 2022, and at that same time, I think that the thinking was the same, to attach it to another bill to make it more attractive. However, this senior tax exemption is still not adopted or has been passed by the House, right? So, in order to make sure that we actually get it through and get the relief to our seniors, I do feel the best way to get, get it across and adopted, and this relief to our seniors is for it to pass along, because we tried that strategy in 2022, and that it's not, we still don't have the senior tax exemption.
Thank you. Is it, oh, the chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. From the chair to the filer, this is another process question here. From what I understand, it's, so the, so I'm tracking this correctly, the goal is to get it over to the State House because there's a deadline. Yes? Right, I believe that's what I heard you say.
January 17th.
Is, right, is the final deadline. But, from what I understand, there's a second, there are two, there's session A, there is, it's not the final deadline.
No, no, it's not.
Okay, oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Counselor Worrell, if you would like to respond to the chair, you may.
Yeah, it's not the final deadline.
Okay.
The, the idea around this is to try to get this through this, through the State House as quickly as possible so that our seniors, right, could get relief as soon as possible. Yes, we can wait, right, and that relief will come a lot later, or we can move now to try to get relief to our seniors as soon as possible.
No, that's not my question.
And then I, I think also too is that...
That's not my question. Okay, one moment.
Counselor Worrell is speaking.
Yeah, most, most lead sponsors, right, are in control of their bill, right? They decide what language, what changes, and they work on the language in that. This is no, no different in terms of language and moving it forward. So, I just want to also address that.
Thank you. If you'd like to respond, Counselor Mejia to the chair, you may.
I'm going to keep going to what, it's not even a matter of responding, because I don't think the question is about the timeline, because what I heard you say, excuse me, what I heard you vote, what I heard you say was that we had a deadline of January 17th because of the filing, because in order for them to move on it, it had to, the deadline is the 17th, right? Because it's, it's just confusing. I just...
Counselor Worrell, Counselor Mejia has the floor. So, and then if you would like to respond, you may, but Counselor Mejia has the floor.
No, no, I just, I just want to make sure that those who are watching and tuning in understand that if there is a deadline, then we have to do our due diligence in getting this over to the State House, because there's a deadline. From what I understand, there are number, when it comes to home rule petitions, we can send them at any moment to the State House for consideration. So, what's throwing me off is the January 17th deadline, and I want to make sure that I do not become the reason why our seniors don't have any relief. So, if there is a deadline, as you've stated here, then we need to take that into consideration. But, from what I understand, when it comes to home rule petitions, there aren't any deadlines, because we can send home rule petitions at any moment to the State House for consideration and movement. So, that's why I'm trying to understand what your reasoning is, and so that we get it on the record and people understand, is it an official deadline on the 17th or, or not? Because that is a very important part of the puzzle here.
Thank you. Counselor Worrell, if you would like to respond to the chair, you may.
Right. Through the chair to Counselor Mejia. As I stated, my understanding of the process is to assure a hearing, right, that in order, in order to assure hearing, the January 17th, all the state representatives are filing their legislation to assure a hearing on all the legislation that they are filing.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. You have the floor.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a couple of questions to the, to the chair of the Ways and Means, and I know you mentioned we have to get this up here before January 17th. Can you give us a history of, of this particular document? Was there, was there a hearing on it? And what changes with the amended, amended version you had? Can you talk about what those changes were?
Counselor Worrell, if you would like to respond to the chair, you may.
But, yeah, through the chair to Counselor Flynn, this is the same exact senior property tax exemption that we passed as a body in 2022. The only thing that I have changed is allowing for the State House to make changes to this exemption. The only thing that I have changed. But, it's the same thing... have changed. But it's the same thing that we passed as a body in 2022.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Flynn, would you like, would you like to respond, or are you good?
Yeah, I would like to respond. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, I just want to know if all my council colleagues are also comfortable with this. Are they completely familiar with this document? And have we asked the relevant right questions? We all support tax relief for seniors, but are we certain that there is, is something that we're, we're not getting or we're going to miss based on not having a hearing or voting on it without any really discussion or the ability to actually read the document? That's, that's my concern.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter?
Madam Chair, would the chair of Ways and Means be able to respond to that?
If he would like to, he may respond. Counsel Worrell, if you would like to respond to the chair, you may.
Motion to move to a vote.
Okay. Motion to move to a vote.
Point of, point of order.
It's a motion to remove the previous question that's been seconded. Can we please do, Mr. Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote on this matter? It's a, it's a move to, it's a call to move the previous question. It is not up for debate. Mr. Clerk, can you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on document number 0143. Counselor Braden. Counselor Clara Zapata.
Yes.
Counselor Clara Zapata, yes. Counsel Durkin.
Yes.
Counsel Durkin, yes. Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Counsel Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counsel Fitzgerald, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Louie Zinn.
Yes.
Counsel Louie Zinn, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Counsel Mejia, yes.
Counsel Murphy? Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Pepe. Counsel Santana.
Yes.
Counsel Santana, yes. Counsel Weber?
Yes.
Counsel Weber, yes. And Counsel Worrell?
Yes.
Counsel Worrell, yes. Document number 0143 has received 10 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. We are now moving, anyone else have a green sheets poll? Okay. The chair recognizes Counsel Santana. Counsel Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Clerk, I would like to pull docket number 0117 for the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, could you please?
It's on page 13.
Do you have that docket before you, Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
Could you please read docket number 0117 into the record?
From the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, document number 0117. Message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $593,750 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 25 Hazmat earmark grant awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Fire Services, to be administered by the Fire Department. The grant will fund the needs of the hazardous materials response teams as specified, the line items 8324-0000 and 8324-0050 of the Fiscal Year 25 General Appropriation Act.
Thank you. I want to, absent objection, and Counsel Flynn is, okay, no, okay. Absent objection, the motion of the committee chair is accepted, and the docket is properly before the body. Counsel Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice held a public hearing on all the FY25 and FY24 City of Boston's grants administered by the Boston Fire Department on June 11, 2024. The committee heard testimony from three BFFD staff members, Kevin Coyne, the Deputy Commissioner, Administration and Finance, Julie Byrne Devon, the Procurement and Grants Manager, and Shana Lynch, who's the Grants Manager. We also were joined by Counselors Murphy, Flynn, Fitzgerald, Durkin, Weber, and Clara Zapata, and received a letter of absence from Counsel Pepe. The panelists testified on each grant administered by BFFD, as well as grants, the grant transfers as previous years. During the hearing, Julie Devon, the Procurement and Grants Manager, testified specifically on this grant, and stated that this grant was earmarked from the Massachusetts Department of Fire Services, and is reimbursable. The City of Boston received this grant last year in FY24, as well, in a larger amount, which is determined by the Commonwealth based on the state's budget. Ms. Devon indicated that this grant is only used for the Hazmat Response Team related expenses, and is also for training that goes along with the procurement process in order for the team to do their job efficiently, safely, and successfully. BFFD also provided the committee with written information on this grant, which I have reviewed as a, as a chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, and which confirms and echoes the testimony the committee heard in person during the hearing. As Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, I recommend moving this docket from the committee to the full council for discussion and formal, and formal action. At that time, my recommendation to the full council will be that docket number 0117 ought to pass. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
And thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, thank you to the chair as well of public safety. Madam Chair, I know this grant very well, but I'd like to make a recommendation. Maybe it will be implemented, maybe it won't. But as it relates to this particular type of grant, we had professional, outstanding, dedicated people from the Boston Fire Department that offered testimony. They were mostly from the legal team, they were from the finance team, they were from the budgeting team. Wonderful, outstanding people. But we don't necessarily have someone from the, the Boston Fire Team that is actually participating in this type of work. Those are, those are the details I like to ask a particular person on the ground that's, that's doing the specific work. And I'd like to make a recommendation, when we do have a hearing going forward, if we can learn from, not the person that's writing the grant, they're outstanding, not the person that's legal or budgeting, they're also outstanding. I'd like to learn more from the person that is on the ground doing the work, listening to them, asking them specific questions. Some of the questions we asked were unable to be answered, and they only could be answered, it's not their fault, they only could be answered by someone in that program. So that is my recommendation, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter?
Madam Chair, my, my question is to the, to the chair, is that something we can do going forward?
Counsel Santana, through the chair, you may respond if you'd like.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. And we're currently working on, you know, similar to last year, how we did all the fire grants together. We're currently working on that. Happy to work with you and your office to make sure that, you know, the right personnel, that we can invite the right personnel for that. That's never been a problem. And yeah, happy to do that. So, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Counsel Santana, what is the docket number again?
0117.
0117. Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Okay, Counsel Santana moves for passage of docket number 0117. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket is passed. Do you have another? No? Okay, thank you. Counsel Weber, do you have a green sheets?
I do.
A poll? Okay. The chair recognizes Counsel Weber. You have the floor.
I do. Sorry, on behalf of, so I'm the vice chair of the Environmental Justice and Resiliency and Parks Committee, because the chair is not here, can I pull from the green sheets docket number 0110?
Thank you. With her consent to poll? Yeah, with, with her consent to poll?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, okay. Counselor, oh, Mr. Clerk, could you please read it into the record?
From the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency and Parks, docket number 0110. Message in order authorizing the City of Boston accepting spend the amount of $500,000 in form of a grant for the Parkland acquisitions and renovations for communities awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, to be administered by the Parks and Recreation Department. The grant will fund the prospect of cities and towns in acquiring and developing land for park and outdoor recreation purposes.
Thank you. Absent objection, the motion of the committee vice, vice chair is accepted of the docket is, Counsel Flynn, is that an objection? I just want to make sure. Okay. The docket is properly before the body. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Yeah, I just, I believe, I think Madam President can confirm that the chair had given notice to Madam President.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, I do know that she wanted to pull.
Of this poll, this is not, you know, just me pulling this out of thin air. This is a grant for Ringer Park renovations in Alston, and in terms of any other questions, hold on, give me one second. You know, we, we'd like to approve the grant of $500,000 so we can, we can renovate the park, and based on the chair's suggestion, I recommend that this pass, and I'm putting it up for vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Weber. And you said it's for Ringer Park, yeah?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Would anyone like to speak on this matter? Oh, the chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Madam Chair, may I ask the, the vice chair of the committee a question? Was, when did the hearing take place on this, on this grant?
Through the chair, vice chair, if you would like to respond, you may. I don't believe, since it's a green sheets poll, I don't believe that there was a hearing, but Counsel Weber, you may respond.
Yeah, I just, give me one second. So I, yeah, I, this is referred to the committee on December 4th, but if we can have just a short, one-minute recess, I could answer your question definitively, if you, if you need it.
We are in a brief one-minute recess.
Thank you, thank you.
We are back from recess. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Sure. So just to answer Counsel Flynn, there was not a hearing. I just, I have some additional memo. I think everyone was provided with a memo on this. The Boston Parks and Recreation Department applied for a $500,000 grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts' Parkland Acquisition Renovations for Communities Grant, or Park Grant. It's an annual grant program of up to $500,000 for, which helps cities and towns build and acquire parks. Ringer Park was selected as a recipient of the full $500,000 grant. The grant will enable the park renovation to include a new play area, a new dog recreation space, space, a flexible field space, improved entry areas, accessible pathways throughout the park, and woodland restoration, and a new accessible path. This project is being funded by the Capital Improvement Fund, and a $900,000 gift from the Harvard-Alston Public Realm Flexible Fund. The Park Grant requires the city to accept and expend an order, you know, I guess it came before us, but I think that there was a deadline of December 31st, but, you know, I, so I believe actions required now. That's why I'm putting this forward and hope we'll approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that, is that responsive, Counsel Flynn? Do you have additional?
No. Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the vice chair, his response, and I know he's filling, filling in. I'm not going to stand in the way of, of money going into, enable it to fix up a park, although I think most people know I would like to learn more about particular projects before I, I vote yes, but certainly this is an important funding project. I'm voting yes. But I do like to know exactly what I'm voting on before that vote takes place. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Counsel Weber, Vice Chair of the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency and Parks seeks passage of docket number 0110. All those in favor say aye. Aye. This docket is passed. We are now on to late files. I'm informed by the clerk that there are five late file matters. One, six late file matters. One personnel order, one absence letter.
Two absence letters.
Two absence letters.
One personnel, one Counselor Communication from Counselor Durkin, and...
Two, there are two communications. Okay. There are two communications and one report of public officer. Yeah, okay, thank you. We will take a vote to add these late file matters, to add the personnel order into the record. Counsel Flynn?
I have a point of order, Madam Clerk.
For Madam Clerk, or me?
I mean, I mean for you, Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I know some, I know our colleagues, some of them have, have left, but one of my colleagues did want to speak before the, before someone put it into, for, for a vote. When you're taking something out of a green sheet, you usually give people, hopefully you give people the opportunity to have a discussion, because you haven't even read about the document. And Counsel Mejia, I think, wanted to, and Counsel Murphy and others, wanted to learn more about it, and then someone wanted to go right to a vote. I think, I think that's a reason why we need to have a more thorough process of, of having that on the agenda. But if people take something out of a green sheet, we should be giving a little bit of extra consideration and respect, that we can at least hear their questions of thoughts. I, I'm troubled by that, and it's, it, it shows with the lack of, with the lack of attendance here. And if one person leaves this room now, we don't have a quorum. And that's not good for the body. I, I do think we have to be a little bit more respectful when we're taking things out of a green sheet. Give people the opportunity to learn about it, but don't, but then don't go for immediate vote if people still have a question. I believe Counsel Mejia had her light on before, and she wasn't recognized. And she should have been given the opportunity to give her opinion. She certainly earned that as a, as a, as a allied city council. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I went to Counsel Worrell, he was responding to questions, and there was a back and forth, and then he moved. I can't prevent my colleagues from moving for a vote. I do think it is best practice, as early as one knows that they want to pull something from the green sheets to send it to me, but that is a best practice. And sometimes I know chairs are making different decisions, so I just wanted to put that before. So we are now on to late files. I am informed by the clerk there are five late file matters, one personnel order, two absence letters, two communications, and one report of public officer. Six late file matters. Could we please read the personnel order into the record? Okay, okay. Counsel Flynn, are you able to stay so that we have quorum? Counsel Flynn? Yeah. We are in a brief recess, and likely, we are in recess. We are now back in session. Mr. Clerk, could you please read the first personnel of the late file matter personnel order into the record?
First late file matter personnel order, Counsel Louie Jean.
Can you also please read the two absence letters into the record?
First absence letter, dear Mr. Clerk, I regret to inform you that I am unable to attend today's council meeting. A member of my staff will listen in and take notes accordingly. Thank you, Counselor Tanya Fernandez Anderson. Second absence letter, I regret to inform you that I am unable to attend this week's council meeting as I am out of the country grieving a family death. A member of my staff will be in attendance at the meeting. I will review the recording when I am able. Thank you for your understanding, Counselor Enrique Pepin.
Thank you. Take a vote to add these late file matters to the agenda. All those in favor of adding, say aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. These late file matters have been added to the agenda, and they have been read into the record. And they have been placed on file. Mr. Clerk, could you please read the next late file matter, the report of public officers into the record? The report of public officers. Yep, into the record.
Offered by Counselor Luzy, Counsel President Louie Jean, order of Counsel President Luzy Louie Jean. Whereas on Monday, January 13, 2025, the City Council received a complaint alleging violations of the open meeting law on two occasions. And whereas pursuant to the provisions of the open meeting law and the Attorney General's Regulations, the City Council is required to review the open meeting law complaint and respond to the complaint within 14 days. General laws, Chapter 30A, Section 23B, and 940, CMR 29-5. And whereas to comply with the open meeting law and the Attorney General's Regulations attached to this order is the complaint preference herein. Now therefore be it ordered that the Law Department for the City of Boston address the open meeting law complaint and respond accordingly on behalf of the Boston City Council.
Thank you. We will take a vote to add this late file matter to the agenda. All those in favor of adding, please say aye. Aye, all opposed say nay. Thank you. This late file matter has been added to the agenda. Mr. Clerk, could you please refer this docket to the Law Department? The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. On that, on that docket, it's a, can you give us a little background about it? I know we got something at the middle, at the beginning of the meeting. I didn't, I didn't read any of it. It seemed like it was five or 10 pages, but is there anything, any highlights of it so we have an idea of what it was? Or is the City Council going to discuss it at all in a Rules Committee meeting? I don't, I don't know anything about this, this complaint someone sent.
I'm happy to talk a bit about it. It's a, it's a complaint that we received on Monday, and there are two, there are two allegations made regarding open meeting law violations, one regarding the signing of a letter, and the other regarding the conduct, the conduct, how roll call votes are conducted. I've looked back traditionally on how, and we did this, we look back traditionally, even under your presidency, on how these matters were handled. They're referred to the Law Department, and they respond on behalf of the City Council.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. This docket is referred to the Law Department. We are now, Mr. Clerk, would you please read the next two late file matters, the two communications into the record?
From Counselor Sharon Durkin, communication regarding docket number 0127.
And the other communication?
Other communication is a response from the mayor on the 17F order submitted by Counselor Murphy.
Thank you. We will take a vote to add these two late file communications into the record. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed say nay. The ayes have it. These late file matters have been added into the record. I don't know if any would like to speak. Counselor Durkin, you want to speak on your communication? The Chair recognizes Counsel Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to flag for everyone that it's really important that I now know, as the Chair of Planning, Development, and Transportation, that I review some of the dates, just to make sure that after a landmark is signed, we have 30 days to vote on it. So it seems that with City Hall, we attempted to vote on it last meeting and didn't end up getting a vote, and on Monday it became a landmark, so we didn't have time. So I think on my end, I'll be more intentional about just letting everyone know the dates and just double-checking them. Seems like it's really important that I obviously have a handle on the landmark process, so I'm just grateful for all of my colleagues. Just wanted to send a communication that the chamber we're standing in is now landmarked, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we, did we handle all the late files, Mr. Clerk?
Those two.
Oh, they will be placed on file. Those two communications will be placed on file. Okay, we, all the late files. We are now moving on to the consent agenda. I've been informed by the clerk that there are three additions to the consent agenda. The question now comes on approval of the various matters contained within the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Aye, thank you. The consent agenda has been adopted. We are now on to announcements. Please remember that these are for upcoming dates and events. We have some council birthdays. Maura Karagi upcoming, I think, is today the 15th? Her birthday was yesterday. Our very own Arneeta Flint, happy early birthday, her birthday is tomorrow. Lauren Carmee, and Bailey Nadine Vine. So happy birthday to those January birthdays. This is MLK Weekend coming up, I know that. The BASE Program in Roxbury South End is having their annual BASE MLK event on Saturday, and BASE is having their MLK remembrance this weekend as well. I'm not sure if any of my colleagues have any additional announcements that they would like to make. Okay. Oh, the Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and want to thank our colleagues for their resolution recognizing Dr. Martin Luther King Day. I also have a resolution as well, much after the fact, and theirs was, theirs was before mine, but I just want to acknowledge their exceptional resolution and their comments as well. One issue, one point I do want to make, Madam Chair, is we celebrate the birth, we celebrate the birthday of Dr. Martin Luther King, recognize his exceptional contributions and heroic work in the country and across the world. I also want to recognize, I always recognize as well the African-American veterans for their heroic work and service, including our Tuskegee Airmen, who served our nation in harm's way, and whether it was World War I or World War II, willing to die for our country, and then coming back to the United States and still not receiving the same civil rights as everyone else. So I also think of our African-American veterans, also, besides, I certainly think of Dr. Martin Luther King, I also think of African-American veterans for their heroic service, their sacrifice, and leadership really too, in building a better country, in building a better world as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We are now moving on to memorials. If you would like to speak on behalf of anyone who has passed away, now is the time. The Chair recognizes Counsel Weber.
Thank you very much. You know, I rise today in honor of Craig Seame, the brother-in-law of constituents of mine in West Roxbury. He grew up in Brighton and was a dedicated hockey player. He played for Brighton Youth Hockey before playing for Don Bosco Tech, and later played in college at American International College. He was a beloved member of the hockey community here and a dedicated coach with the Alston-Brighton Youth Hockey Association. He died unexpectedly, and his family will be, his family will be having a celebration of his life at the Cora Pub in Brighton on February 1st at 3:00 PM. They ask that any donations, you know, instead of sending flowers, to send donations to the Alston-Brighton Youth Hockey Association at 11 Margot Road in Brighton, Massachusetts. I know his family is suffering, I'm just rising to support them. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn, then Counsel Fitzgerald, then Counsel Santana. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'd like to recognize the young man that was killed in the accident in Andrew Square over the weekend, his, his family and friends, who were not thoughts and prayers. I'd also like to recognize a wonderful woman from my neighborhood, Mrs. Rooney. She was 92 years old. She had, she raised 11 sons. She was a grandmother to 30, and a great-grandmother to 13 children. And I knew every, all of her sons, I played sports with them. I know Counsel Fitzgerald knew her sons, knows her sons as well, played sports with them as well, and Counsel Murphy knew them, knew the family. But Mrs. Rooney was a wonderful woman. She gave back tremendously to the community. She was active in St. Augustine, St. Monica's Parish. She was always there for the community. She worked on the food pantry. She was there for Thanksgiving and Christmas and supporting families in need. She was involved in the youth sports program, whether it was the South Boston Youth Hockey or the South Boston Little League. I always loved going with my parents to Simon of Cyrene Breakfast over in Venenziere in Dorchester, because Mrs. Rooney would be there. And Simon of Cyrene is an organization that supports children, children and young adults with disabilities. She, she helped them financially, but she volunteered her time and effort to so many other different organizations. Her funeral mass was today. I took my parents to St. Cecilia's Church this morning for the wake. But Mrs. Rooney is in our prayers, she's in our thoughts, and she really is a symbol of South Boston, in our community of, of hard work, watching out for your neighbor, respecting each other, and always, always having a kind word and encouragement for anyone, especially people in need. So I remember Mrs. Rooney and her family today. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to send my love to the Barrows family, constituents in D3, a stalwart family that represents the Upm's Corner community so well. And having lost loved ones to cancer, and being a parent myself, I can't offer any words into the loss of their two-year-old son, Christian Barrows, just the other day, and really just sending my love to that family. Having worked for John for two years as well, I know how much his children mean, as they all do to all of us parents, and so my thoughts and love is with them today.
Thank you, Counsel Fitzgerald. I also want to uplift the Barrows family in this unspeakable and unfortunate tragedy that they are going through, and may God keep them and hold them. The Chair recognizes Counsel Santana. Counsel Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to uplift one of our colleagues, one of my best friend, or my best friend and one of my colleagues, Enrique Pepin, who's, you know, had a sudden death in the family of his grandma, and is now traveling, and I just want to make sure, I know many of our colleagues have reached out to him, but I know that he's going through, him and his family are going through a difficult time, so I just want to name that and wish my condolences to him and the Pepin family during this difficult time. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Santana, and thank you for uplifting his grandmother and her memory. Okay, as any, everyone, okay. Today we will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. On behalf of Counsel Braden Raymond Arthur. On behalf of Counsel Flynn, Barry M. Anderer. On behalf of Counselors Flynn and Fitzgerald, Margaret C. Peg Hun Rooney. Hun Rooney. On behalf of Counselors Fitzgerald and Louie Jean, Christian Barrows. On behalf of Counsel Warral, Mary Jo Arn. On behalf of Counsel, myself, Keith Glow, father of Kate Glow, friend of Emily Poston. On behalf of the entire Boston City Council, the victims of the fires in Los Angeles. A moment of silence. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. The council is scheduled to meet again in the IANLA Chamber in two weeks, on Wednesday, January 29th, 2025, at 12:00 noon. Thank you to my colleagues, to central staff, the clerk in the clerk's office, and the council stenographer. Happy MLK Weekend, everyone. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Aye, the council is adjourned.